All of this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, February 27th, to order at 7:00 PM. Before we start, do we want to do the Finance Committee, want to call themselves to order?
I'll call this meeting of the Finance Committee to order.
Okay. All right. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we go to the community prayer, I forgot to read the announcements, my apologies. This meeting is being capable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. There are openings on several committees, please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Mr. Robertson, we'll go ahead and do the community prayer, please.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responses in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Just a little housekeeping, you can see Mr. Clark's not here tonight. He has got vacation, I know it's hard to believe, but he feels he needs a vacation once in a while, plus business, and Helen is still stuck in traffic with her long commute, and she'll join us as soon as she is able. All right, moving on, we now have the citizen participation. This is the time we give for members of the Chi Republic to come and speak before the Board. We do ask that they keep your comments to three minutes, so that if there are several people that wish to speak, that there'll be plenty of time for everybody. So, do we have anybody who would like to address citizens' participation tonight? Mr. Belvin, you raised your hand. Yeah, rose your hand. It's gonna be a good night, raise your hand.
How you doing, Robert Belvin, 26 Gate Street?
Oh, good, yourself, sir?
I'm good.
All right.
A formality thing.
Yep.
Finance posted a meeting for tonight, but there was no agenda with it, just an FYI.
Okay, I was unaware of that.
Can I comment on that?
Yep.
There's actually a jointly posted meeting, says Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee says properly posted. Does that work for you?
Not through what says Finance Committee, and they don't have anything there. So, but I'm just, just put it out there.
I appreciate that.
The second thing is, I actually have two things. The first one is, the appointment of people to committees within this town. I think that needs to be addressed. You ask people to volunteer their time and effort for it, but then when people turn around and look at how the boards that are appointed by the town administrator for different boards and committees, you see some of the same people on it, and there was no advertising out to say, hey, you want to be part of this, we're really looking for this, and I think a lot of people don't like it, and it's been shown. I mean, I'm quite vocal, I'll speak out, if you haven't figured that out, all right, over the years.
I'm really shocked, Bob.
Right, but that's, that's one of my issues. The second one is, is as a redevelopment authority member, being voted by this town, I want to research stuff for this town that I may bring back to the redevelopment authority. They've created a policy that I disagree with, and I feel that if I'm gonna look for information through this town, I shouldn't have to go as a resident, Robert Belvin, requesting information. If I'm requesting it for me, for work that I may use for the redevelopment authority, I should be able to go and ask a resident, I mean, a town employee, a question and get an answer, and not have to go through the town administrator, since they are, and this has to do with the tax collector. All right, sweet, very nice woman, took the information fine, said she'd get back to me, no problem, and then I get one, well, I can't answer it. You need to go through him.
I believe I've seen the email train, and as far as I know, you, I was told that you were gonna be getting that information shortly. Has that information that he requested been provided?
Well, some of it, but the initial question that I did ask her never got answered, and still hasn't been answered. So, and that question is, is that if the town takes property by tax title, and the town of Carver owns the property, but who is in charge of that property? Because on the property record card, I'm talking about Robert's way, all right, those two properties, it says the town selectmen and city councilor are in charge of those properties. So, therefore, I think that question needs to be answered, because it could affect how things are done in the future.
Valid point. It's not really on our agenda, that we have a short version answer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that was discussed with Mr. Belvin and the Carver Redevelopment Authority. It's on their, it'll be on their agenda for their next board meeting, because we're waiting to get some information from town councils, so we can answer Bob's question.
Well, that was never, that was never brought up to us purely, there's a communication problem.
Bob, it was in the minutes, and it was also, I'm sorry, it wasn't in the minutes, it was on the tape, so if you watched the tape from the last meeting, we said we would bring that up for the next meeting.
Okay, we're not gonna get into a discussion of what is or is not on the tape.
Correct, thank you very much. Okay.
And apparently, it is gonna be brought up at your next RDA meeting.
Like I said, and that's my final one, so thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Anyone else? Hearing not, we shall continue. First up, we are having a police department overview report presentation from MRI, and if we could have the chief and gentlemen from MRI at the desk, or how do you want to do this?
I'll just introduce them first of your mind.
Okay.
So, good evening, and these are, this is Alan Gould and Dave Kurtz from MRI. They've developed the high-level overview of the Chi Police Department, they're gonna present it to us tonight, so we can have a roadmap moving forward as to how we're gonna move forward with our police department. So, they'll be up to speaker then, I'll run the call.
And I just ask you gentlemen to make sure you use the mic, so all the people, we have tremendous ratings, we have lots of people watching us, so I want to make sure they can go ahead and hear us.
Just like the Olympics.
Oh, we're better than the Olympics, not a problem.
Well, good evening, and just, I know you have a full agenda, so just a really brief background on the company. We've been in business for more than 25 years. My name's Alan Gould, I'm the president of the company, and I have, in my previous life, I spent 26 years in police service, retiring as a chief, and then becoming a town manager. Dave has spent his career, and he's a little older than I am, so he's spent even more time in police service and as a police chief.
We don't deal with age discrimination here, which is not allowed.
Very subject, very subject.
I just, if you speak up for my lawyer.
So, again, we were engaged to do this study, I'm gonna let, let Dave kind of walk us through the slides, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions when we get through it, it's very, very brief.
Okay.
Just one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
MRI was also the firm that helped us with the joint facilities report for the school in the town that we have implemented, and they were the ones that you read that study from before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you would go to the first slide, Chief, thank you. We were really, we were hired to focus on three loosely topics, and then expand from there if it was necessary, is to review the existing police facility, to review the organization, current organization structure and the staffing, and of course, to re-look at the policies and procedures of the department, if you would. We based a lot of what we saw on really an excellent report that you had already obtained in 2010 from Reinhardt Associates on the facility, and we agree with all of their points. Our expertise came in somewhat later when we talk about some of the, if you have a facility or a chief's office, you should consider having these things in the close proximity to that. But there were some immediate issues that we saw that were really quite troubling to us as police professionals, where you'll notice, for instance, the picture on the right-hand side is when you step into the lobby, what you're seeing there is a window into the dispatch center, so that if anyone were to come in there, that's where they would immediately speak to someone who's a representative of the department. But ironically, the back of that, the barrier essentially, is the back of the radio console, where someone just accidentally spill something in there, or deliberately spill something in there, your radio system would be, would be significantly jeopardized, or destroyed virtually. So, that's, you know, that's one of the things that we immediately saw, and it's not like a pivoting moment, but it's, it's the type of thing that is really problematic in public safety at this juncture. There's a lot more verbiage that's within our report, but suffice it to say that since the study done in 2010, it has not gotten better, and we certainly are in agreement that the town will look at constructing the facility, and I understand that there are funds available to do that. We recommend a working group that will come up with some ideas as to what your police facility is going to look like, and what kind of money you're willing to invest in So, this is some of the interior. I think there's, there's nothing unusual here, other than, you know, there's no storage, and it becomes somewhat of, somewhat in disarray, where there were some long guns, for instance, that were being stored over in one of the offices, and, you know, one of the things I think that becomes problematic, besides the fact that the community wants to be proud of its police facility, or that you're gonna be using, and frankly, in your community and in my community, most people in the community hope they never go past the front door. You know, it's not like this is a library and we want it welcoming, but it needs to be functional, so that if, you know, your most intimate problem is gonna be solved within there, you want it to be, not you moving around boxes to get to a place where you can sit down and talk, and solve these problems. So, this was more of a, just an example of some of the things we came in, that we saw.
And this may look bad, but it's a matter of they're doing the best they can with what they have, so that's why this ends up like that, and a new facility will allow this to not happen anymore, because everything will have a place.
Next slide. This is the second area that we were asked to look at, is the existing structure, and then our recommendations as to how the structure should be. Currently, the, in this organizational chart that's before you, the police chief oversees, obviously, everything within the department, and the structure here is that he oversees three patrol sergeants and one that's designated as an administrative sergeant. Now, in organizations the size of Carver, it would be very appropriate, in our opinion, necessary, to have a second-in-command, not only a second-in-command that can handle many of the tasks that would be associated with administration, but also one that would be out of the Massachusetts Civil Service. And it would look like this, so that the second-in-command would report directly to the chief, but would oversee the patrol sergeants. In this chart, that's the case, but it could be, it could be delved up in a variety of ways as to whoever the second-in-command is, that they might, for instance, as we put in here, oversee the school resource officer, prosecution services, dispatch, to take some of these burdens off the chief, so that he can focus on things that need to be done in a day-to-day basis, or the long-term vision of the organization. In many regards, without a setup like this, where there's a second-in-command that can assume command of the department in the absence of the chief, or be a confidant to the chief, because it's not in a union or in civil service, to a certain extent, you almost set the chief up for failure. Not because he's gonna feel on purpose, but because there's so many balls in the air that he's going to drop one. And there's a lot of things that need to be done. As I said in the report, for instance, you know, even the staple gun has to have staples put in it, and if there's no one ordering this, then there's no staples. So, I mean, that's mundane and a kind of an example, but this is what most police departments would, would function in this capacity. Our recommendation is, is that you do a hiring process to identify this person. We think that if you look outside the organization as well as inside the organization, you have an opportunity at least to determine that the people who are inside are as good, if not better, than the ones who are coming from outside, and if not, then you can make some decisions about that. But again, I want to emphasize that we would suggest to the town of Carver that this position be removed from civil service.
Anything else, Alan? No, just to say that, you know, policies and procedures, grant writing, some of those things are what will fall, are what the chief probably doesn't have the time to do now, because in that last scenario, the chief is busy on a day-to-day basis, hour-to-hour, putting out fires, and that's really, shouldn't be the chief's role. If you have that number two, the number two person is able to handle those fires, and the chief is able to deal with some of those really important administrative and managerial functions that will be the last to get done when you're always putting out a fire.
One of the things that we have provided you here is a comparison to some comparable communities in this area. These were identified by the town administrator and the chief. And when I see these things, I'm reminded of what my mother told me when I wanted to go do something. She said, if everyone, if everyone jumped off the Tobin Bridge, would that mean that you'd want to jump off too? So, I understand what, in the context of that, I want to say that just because one community's doing one thing, doesn't mean that Carver has to do it also. There are generally reasons behind that, but it does serve to give you an idea of what other communities of like size, like composition are doing within the world of law enforcement. So, here, there's a compatibility of the population within these communities, and as you can see, Carver's the third most populous within this category. Now, the operating budget, just as you don't want to see Carver too far up, it's pretty much in the middle. It's, the budget runs from a high in Hanson of 2.6 to Carver's 2.1. And again, just an opportunity to see what other people of like communities are doing within this area. Sworn personnel per community, this is another aspect, and we'll get into a little bit, I suppose, with the number of police officers per community, because it's, I almost don't care where MRI goes, or whether it's in my own community, the question becomes, well, how many police officers do we need? And that's a difficult target, and ultimately, the answer to that is decided by you. What level of services do you want? I mean, for instance, if you want a major focus, we, I'm sure that the chief could hire enough people to put a police cruiser at every intersection and make sure that no one goes through a stop sign. But let's be reasonable, it's not gonna happen. And, and so, what this at least allows us the opportunity to do is look at, again, other comparable communities, and see that Carver is, is more on the low end of the number of people within the community per, how many officers are employed by that community in these comparable group. A lot of the, that's in the report, we talked about the number of hours that you have available for officers, and you employ, the chief has to put together a budget where he's employing a person, a sworn staff member, for 52 weeks a year, times 40 hours a week, it's 2,080 hours, that's what you start with. But the truth of the matter is, that often in police work, because of other duties, whether it's training, whether it's court time, whether it's being in the school, doing community policing initiatives, sick leave, vacation, that you all, they're all eligible to have, it's about 1,700, between 1,600 and 1,700 hours within that year that you actually have the officer available. So, as hard as chief is going to put together a budget and a schedule, something's gonna happen within that, that people are gonna be vacant. And, so there's, that's one method. And you're gonna, and then there's another in here, where right now, while we did not do a community survey, it was very clear from us when we did the SWOT exercise, which as people who were there recognized, stands for the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats to the organization, an acronym for that. When we did that, what was very clear to MRI was the respect that the community has for the work that the police department is doing for the, for the citizens of Carver. And based on that piece of important information, we looked at another method of determining how many officers should be within a community, and that's based on workload. How many calls, how many calls per officer are being handled by the Carver Police Department, and are they being handled satisfactorily? Now, we're making somewhat of an assumption, but it's based on facts that we are seeing throughout, that we've somewhat monitored, to determine that there is satisfaction with the community, so that if the calls for service, for instance, right now, it's about 700 calls, a little stronger than 700 calls per officer being handled, and that's a conservative number, because the chief routinely is probably not answering calls, but his body is in this calculation to make it conservative, so that it doesn't look like it's being expanded. The reality is, is that if officers are handling more calls than they can justifiably handle appropriately, then the community becomes dissatisfied. In other words, you'll start hearing things like, all they're doing is taking insurance reports, they're not doing any investigation, there's no follow-up, these things are not being taken care of. So, if, if for instance, it becomes problematic, that calls for service become, start expanding, and the officers are handling more calls than they can justifiably handle appropriately, then you need to start considering the opportunity to hire additional staff before you get there. Because there's a lot of training and town time, just because, it's not like you're gonna plug enough person in and just put them in the slot and solve the problem, it takes time to do that. So, again, this is a chart that allows us to look at the calls for service, obviously, Plimpton is pretty, is pretty high on this. Now, again, what this does not take into consideration is the number of, is the type of calls. It could be a barking dog, it also could be a home invasion, and they're obviously two different things, but again, it's one mechanism that allows us to be able to give you some advice as to how many officers would be appropriate for your community. And then, this is the competent calls I started to get into, and this is projections of for Carver. So, in 2016, there were 12,278 calls handled by 17 officers, which is 722 calls. Now, what we've done to calculate this out, and I will acknowledge immediately that it is not particularly scientific, except for, it provides you a justifiable estimation of what you can project into the future. Calls for service routinely, chief, do you, I don't off the top of my head recall, but I think they went up 4% last year, or something?
Well, when we, when we did this, when we did this slide, we had the number for 2016, but the number for 2017 is actually about 14,500 calls.
So, that skews the numbers already. So, we could have, we would really recalculate this, so that what's gonna happen now is, that was 17 officers, instead of handling 12,000 calls, they're handling 14. That throws that 722, which we were determining as somewhat of a baseline, into the 800s, and that is not good. And my, our point here is, is that you can project this out, adding 4% increase per call, that 2016 to 2017 significantly more than 4%. But again, you can grab a number, you can do 3%, 4%, 5%, you can do 2%, but it still gives you an idea of how many officers will be able to handle the number of calls that you are satisfied with now. And that's important. As we stated, if, if we, in 2016, the police department was highly regarded, well-respected by the community, and determined to do a good job, you want to try to stay around 722 calls per officer. That's a baseline that you can establish because there's satisfaction within the community. You keep adding the 4% to the calls per service, and you can project that out to 2099, how many officers that you may need to consider. Nothing says you have to do that, but it does allow you, as the holders of the public purse, to decide what it is that you're going to spend in the level of services, and this is where it really gets back to, the level of services that you're going to provide as a community to the residents of Carver. And then, we were asked to look at the policies and procedures, the chief, this is another area, as Alan was mentioning, it's difficult for the chief to work and rewrite, to adapt, to massage, to implement new policies and procedures, if he's putting out fires that are arriving on a daily basis to his desk. But we're recommending that an effort be placed in trying to update to best practices the policies and procedures of the department. There are various levels of what we refer to as accreditation, which is essentially that you, there are established policies and procedures that are industry-best practices, and you can implement those practices, but the key to accreditation is the demonstration by people coming in and inspecting the department every three years, every four years, whether it's MasPAC, which we would recommend, or KLEA, which is a national organization where they send people in, and they validate that you do what you say you do by policy. So, in other words, just having a policy on the shelf doesn't necessarily mean that police departments are particularly following it. There's a lot of things that, and that's the essence of what we're trying to, we want to leave the town of Carver with, is that try to do best practice policies, and then it, train on them, and then adhere to them.
And the best practices is not just because you, I guess the importance of best practice is that if something happens, and you have to prove that what you did was as it should have been done, they're gonna look at best practices, they're gonna look at the KLEA standards, the credit, the Commission for Accreditation Law Enforcement Agencies, or they're gonna look at the MasPAC accreditation standards, which are pretty much the same, and they're gonna say, you know, that officer in Carver, or those officers in Carver did this according to best practice, and if they followed that practice, then it was done right, and it helps you with the outcome, whether it's involving a lawsuit, that's very often how we see it. Insurers love to see deaccreditation, because it helps minimize your risk. And although, you know, you don't always see the benefit of that, the benefit can pay itself back in hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars with just a simple lawsuit or two.
Doesn't prevent you from being sued, but the goal is to prevail in the suit.
If I could interject for one second, if you don't mind? So, we do have policies and procedures, they certainly need to be updated, but we've been working on that, using the accreditation standards as a guide. So, we are currently using good policies, but they do need some updating, and we need the time and the bodies to be able to do that.
It's a process that doesn't end, so, you know, some of those policies need to be reviewed on an annual basis, and Dave's an expert on KLEA standards. Some of those need to be reviewed every couple of years, but there are some that some case law will change at the Supreme Court, or in the mass state courts, that will cause a necessary change in the policies and the procedures, and if the chief is tied up chasing fires, then he may not have the time to update some of those policies.
And they change, as they said. I mean, many of us who went to school never considered school resource officers or active shooter plans for schools. Well, nowadays, we're doing that. And, so, what the next thing is, who knows what that is, but the point is, is that it's an ever-evolving process that you need to keep on track. And this goes back to that second-in-command, that it's difficult for the chief to stay current, if he's got too many balls in the air that he can't juggle.
But I think that that's about it, as far as our presentation goes. I know that the report has a lot more information in it, but we didn't want to be that selective, so... So it's your meeting, but we're happy to take questions.
All right. Well, first off, let me thank you very much for coming and for the presentation. I read through the entire report.
I'm sorry.
It wasn't bad till I turned my head like that or lifted the computer up so I could see all the comment sections. Questions from the board, Ms. Hewens.
Thank you. I thought it was a great report.
I have a couple of questions or a comment right away. I loved your first line on the report. The existing police headquarters is a failed police facility. The rest of the report was very interesting, but that was, caught me. I was thinking also in the policy section, that organizational structure will help the chief implement or improve the policies that he has there. You're right, he probably does have too many eggs up in the air right now, so I think those two are one in the same. Your organizational structure will ensure that your policies and procedures are in place and perfected, if you will. So, you know, great report also. I read the whole thing, too. Most entertaining.
And he's sorry for you, too. Going through it, I cringed, and I knew I would when you were talking about the facility itself. We've noticed it hasn't had any improvement. In fact, it's probably a little worse than it was back in 2010. I think it's a mark of how good and dedicated our officers are, that they're still able to do their job and make it work with those conditions. That's why getting the new station is a high priority. Three building projects we want to get accomplished. Then going through the suggested organization structure, I know in the long-term plan that the chief has briefed us before, ideally, where do you like to get to? My personally would like to see us be able to get some more officers, especially after listening to this, a second command up to the chief, but I can see where it would help him, especially when it comes to, you're right, updating procedures and policies is a never-ending battle, no matter what organization you are. It's constant work, and a lot of times, you don't have to put up with a Supreme Court or a state Supreme Court changing the rules on you halfway. So you've got a perfectly good procedure, then all of a sudden, you almost have to rewrite the whole thing. So I think you bring up some very valid points. And like I said, really appreciate the work you and your team have put in on this. Appreciate the chief and the department, the support they gave you on it. I did read some of, I did read all the comments that were added in Appendix A, I believe it is. I was kind of fascinated by some. I think, but there were some good points brought out in those comments to help the planners plan down the road. And again, thank you very much. Mr. Milanowski.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just to...
Can I just add a quick thing? I was just going to say that I also appreciated the fact that you included the officer's survey comments at the end, even though it was sideways. That was a very important thing to read.
I agree.
So, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and I just want to echo a few things you've said. The chief, and having worked with the chief for the last four years, is, you know, continuously trying to improve the department, and in trying to grow into the next century, and all the new issues that happen with police force training and operating the police department, because it is ever-changing. The next incident causes you to retrain and have to look at things differently, and that's the world we live in. And he and his team are doing that, as well as looking at their standard operating procedures and protocols, and looking at to rewrite those. But there's three things that I just want to mention, is that now that this report's done, is that we're looking to have our kickoff meeting next week with the Police Station Building Committee to kind of move that process along. And as you'll hear later on this evening in the capital budget presentation, we do have money set aside to build a police station to satisfy and meet all of the needs that the chief is going to need, plus the building committee as they go forward in doing them. So that's number one. The second is that, as was mentioned in the presentation, and in most departments nowadays, is you do end up having a second in command that is not part of the union structure, not part of the civil service structure. You really need to have a confidant back and forth to work through the myriad of issues, so that you can have one person that's kind of leading the department, and the other that's helping solving a bunch of the issues and putting out the fires that come every day. I mean, it just needs to happen. Fortunately, I have a lane to do most of that on my side, but the chief, the chief needs that over there. And then finally, and I'd like you, the board, to consider doing this at your meeting, right after town meeting, when you set your goals and objectives for the next fiscal year. And that is, what I'd be recommending you to consider is moving forward with a policy statement that in our next budget for year 2020, which will be the next budget we do in the fall, is that one of the objectives the board has, just like you had an objective four years ago to address some of the opioid issues, and the town has seen a dramatic downswing in that due to some of the attention that's happened through your policy votes and funding you put together, is for the board to move forward with finding funding somehow. And again, you know, we're in a pay-go system, so if we're going to add funding, we've got to cut something, but trying to find some way of adding at least one more police officer in 2020. Yes, the report talks about two, but, you know, giving a small town, we can't add two in one year, there's just not the breadth of revenue to do that. But I think starting with adding one in the next year, you know, kind of starts to move this forward, and then this will tie into the chief's continuation of his planning effort. And with this document, he and his admin assistant and admin sergeant and others are going to start to, you know, continue to take this as kind of the blueprint as they continue to work through their processes. So again, those are the three things that I just wanted to bring up. We're starting next week with the Police Station Building Committee. We really need to look at, in the future, moving into a second in command, whatever that title is. And the third is, in next year, in your recommendations for 2020, is that we find a way of funding at least one more police officer.
And that would not only be for 2020, but also at the out-years beyond that.
Of course.
Because, you know, what your plans we make now need to really include to not only just looking for that next fiscal year, but saying, you know, can we afford, or will we be able, based on growth projections, to add one in 2021, one in 2022, or every other year, come up with some sort of plan that we can budget for to take care of us and help the department grow over the next five years.
Right. And, you know, from putting together the budget and working with the finance committee and all the department heads, you know, that's where the direction of the Board of Selectmen to set the policy comes into play, and then we'll figure out a way of making it work, if that's what you want us to do.
And we shall discuss that after April. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great job, guys. Really. Right on time, too.
Mr. Clark's not here tonight. All right, next up, Capitol Outlay Presentation, Mr. Angley, chairman. Good evening, Jack. Please identify yourself.
My name is Jack Angley, chairman of the Capitol Outlay Committee. I don't know, it's my 20th year or so, but anyway, I can remember sitting where you are, Alan, looking at the projection, now the town of Carver's seal is, Rick would have the slideshow going. Bottom line was that the end of the meeting, whatever the hell was left, that bought the capital projects. So much so, we had to go out and borrow money to buy cruises, while under Michael's leadership and the good offices of several other, Steve Pratt and Danny Ryan, who came up with some, came up a few years ago with some different plans, we've come a long way. So anyway, I guess you all have in front of you your, the proposal for the capital plan for this year. I would say just first, the...
And Jack, you've met with all the department heads.
I'm getting, I have to do something first, though. I was embarrassed at a town meeting years ago, when whoever the chair was said, "Now would you say the name of your committee members?" Drew a damn blank. So the next meeting, they all wore signed badges. Anyway, just so you'll know, the members of the committee, of course, because the school is imperative, the building process is all going forward, Scott and Eve is part of the membership, Gina Kavicki, so we have two folks from the school department interested there, Bob Merritt, Frank McPeck, your own Ron Clark with an E, and yours truly, Jack Angley. And of course, Michael's close at hand all the time. So with that, that's the, so we met, we have met with the department heads through the last two months or so. And finally, the last meeting we had was with our members, where we went over the proposals that you'll see on the green sheet, the green column in your plan. Money to $711,000 bucks for the capital acquisitions this year. Now, some of that's bonded, some of that's from grants, some of that's from other sources. But anyway, it's, it's, we voted for, by the way, our vote was to approve everything. We had no, after we answered all the questions, we voted each item individually, and they were all unanimous, so that you know where we're coming from. So, I don't know, what do you think, Mike? You want any questions, or just any, the important things? I think you mentioned the police station. And if you look at four mil, five or six columns down, the police station preliminary budget, $4 million earmarked there. So the meeting that you're going to have in a week or so is, the beginning of it will be, the funding is in order, put it that way. So it's not a pipe dream. I don't have any other highlights, I'm trying to think of the...
I'm going to run through them real quick?
Yeah.
Okay. So the Capitol Outlay Committee spent many mornings going through this, and I'm just going to quickly go through these, and if anybody has any questions, just stop me, and then go into it in more detail. The first item is the front-end loader, which replaces front-end loader 554. That's the only one we have in town. This is an item that every year gets pushed off because we try to get one more year out of it, one more year out of it, one more year out of it. Well, we're finally at the point where it's 10 years past its useful life, and we're concerned we're not going to get one more year out of it. The next item is a field mower tied into the consolidation of the facilities department, which was the school facilities and the DPW. They had all four-foot mowers, small mowers, that they use for maintaining all the fields. You know, the school has, I think it's 12 acres of fields, and then the town has several other acres beyond that. What this is, instead of having a four-foot machine, this will be a 12-foot machine, that one person can operate or have wings on it, kind of like you see on a golf course. So on the big fields, it can just plow right through, and, you know, make a dozen passes versus 48 passes, which then allows one person to do basically, you know, a third, they can get the fields done in a third of the time than you used to do before. But that's being funded through the school building program, through our elementary school, because it's going to be tied into those fields. So the SBP is, right, MSBA, but the source right there is the school bond project. And moving forward, the replacement of the ceiling tiles in corridors in the middle high school. This past year, we've had the roof redone on the entire facility, and as part of that, all of the ceiling tiles where the roof was leaking before, they've all either fallen, thrown away, whatever it may be. So when you walk through the middle high school, more than half of the building doesn't have ceiling tiles. Again, we didn't want to buy any ceiling tiles for the last few years until we got the roof done. The roof is now done, so this is to go through and replace all the ceiling tiles. They are expensive, but this is actually going to be done with school labor and summer help in the summer, so that it actually would be a larger number if we had a contractor doing it, but we're going to be doing it in-house. From there, the next two items tie into the council and aging addition, and this is a preliminary budget for the library and the council and aging addition to the library. There is going to be a public hearing on that on March 14th to go over the preliminary plans that have been reviewed by the Council and Aging Board of Directors, and also the COA Building Committee. Those plans are not final, they are preliminary. The goal is, is to get town meeting approval for a combined $2.5 million to allow the committee to go forward next year, later this year, hire an architect and come in and do a full set of plans. The plans will change during that process, but to begin moving that forward. Plus, you see a $500,000 contingency. That's for the COA and police buildings, so if either building needs some contingency funds, because these are preliminary budget numbers, the goal is that we work within these numbers. If we do need to come back to the town, we will. But this is the same process that we've done with other building projects, where we start with a concept, we get some money to go forward with it, and then we refine the plans as we go along. Now, when we come back for future funds, the intent is that we will not have to borrow any more funds, that we will build those future costs into our capital and debt stabilization fund, so there'll be no more borrowing of funds. So our goal is, is that this year is the last time for a long time that we do any borrowing. When I say a long time, a decade or two, before the town is really, you know, from what we're seeing right now, in a position where it has to do any long-term borrowing. We think we can live within our capital outlay budget going forward for all the needs to maintain our buildings, which is something, as Jack said in the very beginning of the meeting, you could never do before because you were just left what was ever left on the screen, and you hope that that was enough to do a quarter of what you needed to do, but it was never enough. Then we get into the police station, again, a preliminary budget number of $4 million. There's already been over $200,000 allocated to that project from future town meetings. This is to, again, start with the police building committee, and, you know, if we end up needing additional money, is to come back for that, but that money, again, would come out of our capital and debt stabilization fund. I do not believe in need to go out and do any significant borrowing in the future. Next item is to replace the exterior town hall. We had funded $40,000 over two years, $40,000 a year for two years, so $80,000, to come in and actually fix some of the gaps that you have on the outside of town hall where you have the hardy plank boards, and to come back and repaint it. What we have found is that the boards that are there, particularly on the ends, have just become pungy, and those cement boards, you know, just have deteriorated, that you can just put a pencil through them. So in essence, what this is going to be is take this 40, add it to the other 80, and move forward with the project to actually re-side the entire town hall. It's been 20 years, unfortunately, that product didn't last more than 20 years, so it all needs to be stripped down and redone, so this would...
It's great in the middle, but where the butts meet, they expand and contract. The weather gets in there, and after 20 years, it starts to eat them up. Unfortunately, that's, hardy plank is a great product, it just, at the joints, it's not. Anyway, that's sort of what's happened.
And the width between each one of those is a pencil width. I mean, it's just, it's not good. So that's what that number is. From there, then we have two $35,000 items. These are utility vehicles, one for the elementary school, one for the middle high school. These are in essence gators that have, you know, six wheels on them, where you have a small little dump truck that go in the fields and do work on the fields. One of them is actually being purchased through the school building bond, and the other is actually through the capital. That's why one's in white and one's in green. So again, if it's in white, it's being paid cash. If it's in green, it has another funding source, but it's still in our capital budget. Moving down to about a third of the way to the page is the arbitros we have of the North Carver Woodard District, and it's the debt service for that project. You know, every year, until we get some significant new growth on there, we're going to have this, you know, quarter million dollar, you know, cost that we're going to have to pay for. Part of this, as I think people know, when you look at the history of the project, is that a prior district commission waived a bunch of the betterment fees, and in waiving those betterment fees, the debt was owed, so the board waived the fees, but somebody's got to pay the fees, so by the board waiving the fees, now the town has to pay the fees because the town has to honor the bonds. That's what it is. You know, I've talked about this for the last couple of years, it is what it is. You can't undo it, and we're just trying to get more growth around there, and trying to maintain our costs, our expenses, so that we can keep that moving forward, but that'll come out of free cash. But again, it's tied into our budget. But again, it's tied into our budget. Halfway down the page is a $40,000 allocation for equipment for new hires for police and fire. Right now, we have several retirees and people that have left the force. So we're in the process of hiring new police officers, not new positions, but to fill a vacant position. But part of that means that when they come on board, we have to get new vests for them that are fitted to their bodies, and all new equipment that they need for their public safety. The same applies to the fire department. When the fire department recruits people, they don't recruit people by size. So if they have three large uniforms and they only recruit small people, well, then guess what? They need to get uniforms tied into there. So this is a funding that we've done for the last couple of years, every year, to allow for that to happen for new equipment. $12,500 after that is for a portable speed sign, LIDAR, and then also a used motorcycle. We, the chief, and he'll talk about this in his budget presentation, is very successful in buying equipment from other departments. Some other departments that are in wealthy towns, they like replace equipment every two years, just because they do. And, you know, sometimes we're able to buy equipment that's two or three years old at, you know, 30 cents on the dollar or 20 cents on the dollar, you know, for stuff that has low mileage and is good. So that's, you know, that's one of the items we're looking at here is a used motorcycle that can be done for more traffic protection. Because, you know, in the past, I think last year, there was a few incidents where speeders were having some fatalities. You know, the department has, you know, been enforcing that a lot more, and that has gone down. But sometimes it's easy to do this type of enforcement with a motorcycle. And we do have officers trained on the force that can do this, so there's no additional cost for that. Let's see. Cruiser replacement. This year, we're looking at one new cruiser versus two. And this would be an interceptor to have that up and running. As a side note, and Jack, this isn't on the capital plan, but since I have the finance committee here, I want to mention this to them. We did have a cruiser this past year, recently, that was, struck a deer. And the deer won. The patrol officer's safe, and the cruiser lost. And as a result of that, the insurance company is coming in and totaling the cruiser. But it is one of our frontline cruisers. So we're not sure how much money we're going to get from the insurance company. We may have to come for reserve fund transfer from the finance committee and get the delta to replace that cruiser for another $10,000 or $15,000 or $20,000. Again, we don't know what the number's going to be. I'm just giving you guys a heads up that we'll probably be coming to you for that, you know, again, as an unexpected cost. Back going capital outlay. Let's see. The next item is save funds, capital outlay reserve account. We do have a capital outlay reserve account, just like the FinCom has a reserve account, just like what I'm talking about. The capital outlay does too, just in case there's ever an emergency in town for them to come back and actually do a replacement. I'll give you an example is that, as I talked about, the chief being able to buy, you know, cruisers, 20, 30 cents on the dollar. He was able to buy two or three vehicles from Duxbury that are sedans, not sedans, that are SUVs, that are the same ones that we have out here with short mileage on them. They were just turning them in. So we went to the capital outlay committee and says, here's one of these deals we can't refuse because this allows us to put you second-line vehicles, and they approved that expense for that. Another example is when the wells went down at the middle high school mid-year, you know, we can't call a town meeting for something like that, so this is what helps that happen. And in essence, these funds are coming out of save funds from projects that were turned in below what was approved before. So in essence, we kind of recycle this save money into that reserve fund to use where appropriate in emergencies. Let's see. Then we get into our townwide technology upgrades. When we combine the school and the town IT departments, we now have Steve Mahoney, who's the town IT director, with two people working for him. They manage all of the equipment for the town. We are fortunate with the middle high school, I'm sorry, with the elementary school. We're going to be turning that into the data hub for the entire town. You know, as part of the building, we're building a data room into there. And again, this is all within the budget. It's all under budget, actually. And as part of that data room is then we'll be able to run fiber to each one of the town buildings, so we have our own internet. The fiber we have around town right now is 20 years old, and it's slow. And I'll give you an example with the school, this is tied into fiber and also their phone lines coming in. When it rains, you can't call into the middle high school. No. When it dries out, the phones work. Enough said on that, that the cost of replacing that was an astronomical number. So it's better to replace everything from new tied into the new elementary school, which is actually going to be happening later on this month. And this kind of ties into our townwide technology component. Some of this money will be used to purchase Chromebooks for, I think it's grades five and six, if I'm not mistaken. At the middle high school, we've been buying two years, every year, two grades every year to move those through. The students then have to pay for their own insurance program for that, but we use that. But then this also goes through and updates our servers and our routers and our wireless networks, because those have to go on a rotating schedule, just because the technology, you know, becomes, falls apart. So this gets us to, we always have state-of-the-art equipment up and running. And including this building is getting rewired because some of the data sources are very similar to the example I gave you for the school, except it's not a phone call coming, and it's the printer connecting to the... You get the point. So that's for the townwide technology upgrades. For the school, we're replacing one 71-passenger bus of $75,000. The next item is the replacement of the track and football complex. Right now, we're looking at a total cost of $4.1 million. Of that, about $900,000 is proposed to come out of free cash from the town side. The remaining funds will be coming from the CPC. The CPC has already had their public hearing, their public meeting on this, and they will be voting to support that project. They're using two sources of funds. One is they're going to be transferring $300,000 from surplus, unreserved money they have. And the second is allocating not more than $350,000 annually to pay for a bond that would be equal to $2.925 million, which gets you to, their total investment would be about $3.225 million of the project. And right now, we're looking at $917,000 out of free cash. There's just some minor adjustments we're doing on that free cash number. So that is what that item is. And then finally, the last item we have is $15,000. This is for the cafe at the middle high school. It's to buy new equipment. And I, Jack, there was one item that was, they can't use there. I forget what it was. I think it was the stove.
Yes.
Is unsafe. And some other equipment tied into that. And I think our culinary program has won many statewide awards for some very successful stuff they've been doing. So that really completes the capital outlay. If I call your attention down to the bottom of the page, just to walk through some of those numbers. So the items in white above there is the $711,000. That's the amount that's being paid in cash. This year, after we look at our fixed cost, from what we have available, we had $720,000. So in essence, we've got $9,000 left over this year. The $2.9 million is the number that's in our 10-year forecast plan. This is the money that's transferred in there. So that's the total amount we have, the $2.9 million. Then out of that comes the payoff of existing leases, the capital townwide network implementation and oversight charge of $25,625, capital townwide maintenance contracts of $75,000, short-term interest disclosure statements, project management of $85,000. The $100,000, which is the 25-year reduction of debt exclusion for the elementary school, that's the solar project that we use to reduce everybody's debt down for the school building project. Then we have the estimated debt service for the middle high school roof boiler and police station and COA. That's for a $10 million bond, and that's in the amount of $819,000. You'll see that as it goes out for the next 10 years. And then the last item is the fire station engines, $10 million final debt service. So that's the debt service on the fire station. And as you can see, that goes out, you know, just keeps on going out past 2028. So those fixed costs add up to $2.18 million, which is the number in the red. So we subtract the $2.18 million from the $2.9 million. That leaves us $720,000, which is the number above. And that means we have $711,000 to pay for in cash out of this plan.
Not too bad.
All right. I'll go to the finance committee first. Any questions for the town administrator, Mr. Angley?
Just quickly on the townwide technology upgrades.
Yep.
Aside from cabling, what is included in that?
Okay. So I think about $90,000 or $98,000 is for the Chromebooks, to buy those for the two grades. Then from there, I think there's six servers that are being replaced. Tied into the servers is the routers. Tied into that is, and then also some of the wireless network components that are around there. I have a whole detailed list of that, but that's just what I can remember off the top of my head.
Thank you.
The school presented that. So as part of the chief technology officer, he reports to Scott Neef and myself, so we jointly manage them. And then he makes a report to us, which we then brought to the capital outlay committee to kind of list all these things out. I just don't have it with me.
I think that's all we have.
Do you need to take a vote on it tonight at all?
I don't think, we're missing half our committee. So I don't think I want to take a vote on that tonight.
All right. Comments from the selectmen, Ms. Hewens, reaching for the microphone.
I guess my main question, Michael, is how do we know that the $4 million is going to be enough for the police station, given that we're, you know, just organizing the committee? And if it turns out, because we haven't done a study yet on how much it's going to cost. So if it turns out it's going to cost more, what would be the plan?
Sure. So your first question is, how do I know? How do we know? We don't. We don't. But what we have done is we've looked at what a per-square-foot cost is. And a per-square-foot cost that we've been using and been told by people is around $400 a square foot for a police-type station. We're estimating we need about a 10,000-square-foot building, because one of the things that we're looking at is the old rehab project renovation, reno, just doesn't work in today's age with chapter 149, just as we learned with the elementary school. I mean, the elementary school is going to be $67 million for an ad-reno. It turned out to be 49. So we don't do ad, we don't do ad-reno anymore, just because we can't afford it. So using a per-square-foot cost of $400 times 10,000 square feet gets you to $4 million. Now, that's why it says preliminary budget. Let me just make sure it says that, because it does say that. It says preliminary budget. In parentheses, the same thing as the COA. Now, on top of the $4 million that would be in here, we already have 200, and I think it's $55,000 or $65,000 that's already been approved. It's in our plan right here. I can tell exactly what that number is.
And that was voted, probably the last, what was the last...
Right. It is 255. Here it is. It's 255. So that brings us to 4.225. Then on top of that, then there's another half a million dollar contingency to be used between the COA and the police station, whichever one needs it, or both need it. So then we have some additional funds tied on top of that. And then, as we know, the capital outlay committee also has another $500,000 of contingency funds that they could use as well. So all of a sudden, you're at over a million dollars of contingency that is available if needed. Beyond that, and that should be more than ample to build a building. I think the worst-case scenario is that, you know, the town, we may need to come to the town meeting next year. And again, it would take a while for the building to be built, and we may come back and say we need another $422,000, I'm making a number up, to finish the equipment fit-out. And then we put that in 2020's capital plan, and it'll be funded, and we'd be done. So the number we have is a engineering estimate based upon the square footage that we need. And that process, again, is really no different than when we started with all of our projects, that you start off with an engineering estimate tied into the per-square-foot cost, and then you get into the design, then you refine, then you add, then you subtract, then you just work through until you get a viable project. And until you get it out to bid, and until you have bid projects back in there, it's all speculation at that point, but it's educated speculation. But again, I'm going to emphasize that the one important point is that, you didn't hear me say, this is the final number, it's $4 million, and that's it. I never said that. What has been proposed here, it's a preliminary budget. There will be a need, potentially, and most likely, to come back to town meeting for additional money, to find additional money in our capital outlay plan to pay for some additional cost once we get bids back after a design is done. And, you know, I think as we, as other selectmen and the capital outlay committee was clear with the chief, is that whatever the cost is, we will figure out how to come up with the money to make sure we can pay for it. But we think we're pretty close to get started with the amount we have right now.
But what Michael just explained, Sarah, is what we voted on, that with the contingencies, the $500,000 here, another 500, taking that all in consideration, when we approved it, we approved it that way. Again, it's the best shot you can take, so...
And I think the final thing is too, is look at what we've done, is that the building committees that we've had in town have been phenomenal in the work that they have done. Again, you go back to the elementary school, a $67 million ad-reno project, voted down three times. Wasn't going to happen. We come back with a $49 million plus a $2 million sports complex. It gets voted by, you know, 80% of the voters in town, because we justified the cost. And we're coming in significantly below the numbers that were approved by town meeting. So what town meeting approved for that for debt exclusion, and that's the only project that we've asked for a debt exclusion, is less, significantly less than what they authorized. Then you get into the middle high school roof repair project. That is also built into our capital outlay. Many towns would go out and bond that. We did, I mean, go out and do a debt exclusion. We didn't. We built it into our finance plan. That initially has come in, I think, $800,000 under budget. Then from there, you know, we have the fire station. Again, a remarkable building that was built, you know, to be a headquarters of a town where you have a fire department that saves us almost $2 million a year in operational costs. And that building is one of the best buildings in the state at a low per-square-foot cost. So I think that the core building committee we've had with Bill Harriman, John Dele Pascoli, myself, and... Let me miss a...
Dave.
Oh, Dave Zinkoff, most important person on there.
You've got to write those names down.
Yeah, I do. I do, yeah. Draw that blank there. You know, has really proven itself that, you know, it knows what it's doing and will deliver a quality, well-built, durable building to the town for all of these projects. And the best thing is, none of these projects require any additional, you know, debt exclusion or overrides like they would in any other town. So our finance plan is sound. We've worked on it. We've proven it year after year. Our building philosophy is sound. We've proven that time and time again. And just in the presentation that was done before, the presenters talked, well, you can look at other towns, what they've done, but you don't necessarily need to follow those. We don't follow them. We excel above them and are able to do this in a much more efficient, effective way to protect the taxpayer's resources. And, but, I'm going to just close on one thing. Going back to what the capital outlay committee told the chief, is whatever it actually costs to get the building done, for what our needs are, you'll have the money. And if we have to come back to the capital budget, we will. If they have to move a few projects out, they will. And that's where the money will come back in if and when needed.
Okay. Dave?
No comments. Jack's comments was the best. Pretty nice, huh?
I would, you know, talking about the planning that, you know, the town has done over the years on estimating costs, taking those costs before the voters, they've done a pretty darn good job. And if you get a chance, the report that MRI presented to us, it is on the town website. Am I correct?
Yes.
And in there, you, when it's talking about a new facility, you will see a line in there that says that the fact that we've been doing all this building and plan on building a new police station and everything else, under the... under the debt limit, under the levy limit, without going out for a debt exclusion or a two-and-a-half override, they found that absolutely extraordinary. It's just not done. Except it's done in Carver. I've got nothing else for you guys for this year. If we had more time, I'd want to talk about the out-years a little bit, because I have some questions on that. But that'll do for another time. So I would accept a motion to go ahead and approve this for town warrant to go before the voters at town meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Angley.
You're quite welcome.
And for your service yet again as Chairman of the Capital Outlay.
You know, it's better than being here every other Tuesday night.
I wasn't going to go there.
Jack, I'll write the names down this time.
Okay. See you later.
And since Mr. Milonowski took an exorbitant amount of time to describe each line item, which we did need, we've now eaten into some of the Town Administrator update time. And we're going to start off with, but I don't want this to impact Chief Dufly, because we're going to start off with Police Department budget presentation. So Chief Dufly, come on down.
Thank you, Alan.
Yep.
And don't worry, Alan. I'll take as much time as I.
Oh, you can take as much, you have as much as the Town Administrator had.
Thank you. So before I start, there's not a lot we can, need to really talk about on next year's budget, because it's a level service budget, and there's not a lot of changes in it. But I've got a few words I'd like to talk about what we did last year and what we plan on doing in the future, if you don't mind. So during 2017, the Carver Police Department logged 14,618 calls for service, up a little over 2,000 calls from 2016. Are about 40 calls per day handled by 15 officers, four dispatches, and a part-time records clerk. A partial breakdown of those calls includes dealing with 125 domestic disturbances, serving 121 restraining orders or harassment orders, conducting investigations that led to 11 arrests for narcotics violations, handling 289 vehicle crashes, affecting over 1,200 motor vehicle stops or traffic violations, checking on 312 burglar arms, conducting background investigations related to 357 licenses to carry firearms, and completing 783 requests for records. We worked with our public safety partners, the Fire Department and EMS, to assist in nearly 1,450 calls. Our SRO, our School Resource Officer and other officers, worked the school department to ensure the safety of and to help educate our young people. We ran our fourth junior police explorers program, which allows some of our young people to experience what police officers do on a daily basis. Additionally, the police union was instrumental in running the fourth annual Carver Night Out. Some of you guys won. Our partnership with the Plymouth County Project Outreach continues to provide follow-up after an overdose with an offer of immediate acceptance of treatment program. This program offers one-rep approach in our fight against drugs, which also includes our investigative efforts to arrest those dealing drugs, and our educational efforts to guide our youth into making good life choices. This year, we responded to fewer overdoses than in the past. As requested, I have submitted a level service budget for FY '18. This budget includes all contractual increases, but does not increase staffing levels. However, as discussed earlier, in the coming year, we will need to hire three police officers to replace those who have retired or will have retired by the end of 2018. On the operations side of our budget, there are some increases in the following items. Seminar and training has a slight increase to increase the amount and type of additional trainings we send our officers to. Under telephone, there's a slight increase to reflect rate increases. Responsibility of preparing and expending the budget for our police department is one of my most important tasks. I take that responsibility very seriously, and as evidenced by past four fiscal years. And I want to continue to move forward with this budget. Finally, I'd like to take a minute to thank you and for your support and trust as your police chief, and allow me to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work of our police officers, public safety dispatches, firefighters, EMS personnel, and everyone else who helped to keep our town safe day in and day out. Those are the words I prepared while I'm up here. Obviously, I'll entertain some questions, but I wouldn't mind just adding a few comments in from what I've listened to about the building and about the MRI plan, if we have that time.
Please do.
Thank you. So MRI prepared a nice plan for us. I think that's going to be an excellent roadmap as we move into the future. It gives us some guidance that comes from outside, based on best practices of our industry. And I think we can rely on it to make some important decisions as we move forward in the future. I hope we'll start by making, obviously, and it seems that we have, the police station a priority and increasing the number of police officers a priority. I have many ideas to go along with that report. I've discussed much of those ideas with my officers and our team. And I think that we have a good working plan on how we adjust the structure, organizational structure of our department, to include a second-in-command and to also expand our ability to respond to crime in Carver by adding on an investigative unit with at least two detectives and a sergeant running that. We have that, the call volume, we have the need for it, but we currently don't have the ability. And that is because we don't have those detectives. So we spend overtime and we spend hours after work, after a regular shift, to follow up on investigations. And we need to, that means we are limited in what we do. We need to have an actual division to do that. So we've got some good ideas, and I think the MRI plan will help to guide us in that direction and move us forward as we decide how to spend the taxpayers' money on improving our police department. And I look forward to continuing that process. Speaking to the building, we've heard that $4 million is a preliminary number for that, for the building, and some estimates of 10,000 square feet. I am happy that we will be moving forward with the building committee so we can start to vet some of these ideas, because I think that's where we're going to get to, where we really need to spend. And while the members of that committee all have a different role to play, Mr. Milonowski is with the finances and other people bringing their expertise on building buildings, I am a police officer, and some internal committees that I will form within our department to include all of our officers, will bring forward what we need in a police department to serve the needs of Carver now and into the future. And I think those needs will guide the size, the shape, and the cost of our police department. So I'm happy to hear that we have a preliminary number, and we're starting to move forward on that. I'm also happy to hear, and I'm telling you that I'm going to hold everybody to it, that we're going to put together a plan that has, that is a, that is a police department that fits the needs of the police department now and into the future. And we'll have to try to find the funding to do that. If we can't, then we'll have to make another plan. But I don't think we should limit that by any number. And I'm glad to hear that we have preliminary numbers that we're moving forward. We're going to keep moving forward on that with wherever it goes. So I'm happy about that. One of the things that was mentioned on the Capitol is our, the purchase of used Cruises. I've said it before, I'll say it again, we always buy new Cruises for frontline Cruises. The frontline Cruises are mock cars that go to your response to your house for an emergency, for an ambulance call, could be involved in a car chase. Those cars are always going to be new Cruises. That's what we need. They serve a purpose, and we're always going to move forward on purchasing new cars for that. We have purchased some used cars for our second-line, for our admin cars, my car, the detective's car, the second-in-command's car. Those cars are not routinely responding to calls at a high rate of speed, although they do. They have the capabilities, but we can get away with using equipment that we can get a little bit cheaper and do that. So we've been, we've been very fortunate in doing that. As you saw in the Capitol request, there's a request for $5,000 to buy a used motorcycle. That, again, I believe that we can increase our ability to affect traffic stops and deal with speeding issues in town. And I believe a motorcycle will be a good add-on to that process. But I think to try that program, to move that program forward, we start with a used one. We put it out there for a couple of years, and if we find that it's working excellent, then we'll be back at some point to look for a new one. But we try the program at a lower cost, prove that it works, and then we'll be back to ask if there's some more money for that. If it is, as I say, it will be a good program. So those are the comments that I have on that, on, you know, where we're going forward on this. The equipment we need for new hires is, as Mr. Milonowski said, equipment that we have to purchase. We can't, you know, a vest is a custom-fit thing. And mostly the equipment that the officers are wearing that they retire and not recyclable equipment. So we need to purchase new ones, so.
Did you mention the module on the car?
Oh, yeah. So one of the, I'm sorry. One of the things that we've purchased this year for our newer SUVs is a system. And that's based on the fact that, as we move forward with police technology, it improves. The lighting systems in police cars have gone from the bubble light on top to light bars on top. And now is to a point where the LED light bars draw very little power from the battery while they're, while they're being on. And their technology, as it's increased, like everything, you see all the gadgets that are in cars now, has come to a point where we can purchase devices that go in the cars for $500 per car that allow the car to go to a scene or be on the side of the road for a detail, shut the car off and run its emergency lights. It senses when the battery gets low, and it starts the car up to charge the battery. So it allows us to go green a little bit, instead of having the car running all the time. In the past, if you shut the car off with the lights on, within five minutes, the car's battery's dead and you're moving on. So we're using technology at a small cost to save gas, to save wear and tear on the engines, and again, to be a little more green. So that's something we purchased this year, and we'll look to add on to our Cruises as we, any new Cruises as we move forward. We didn't put it in some of the older Cruises, because it didn't make sense, but all the newer SUVs. Any questions for me?
Questions from the Finance Committee.
Just a couple of things. Talked about before civilian details versus the police on the details and having the officers handle more important calls and stuff. I don't know whether that's something that's rethought of. I know you.
So as, as we discussed before, there are options in this state to use civilian flagmen. We, as a town, have not chosen to, and I don't endorse it, in that we have, everybody that's on a police detail is being paid through a, through either Eversource or another company. And I recognize that that still is money that you're, we're paying out of our pockets to get electricity. But what it does for us is it gives us a police officer on the road equipped, in our town, in a cruiser, that when needed can respond. It doesn't take away from our patrol force in any way, shape, or form, because the details are filled by police officers who are off-duty. But on-duty police officers still are on-duty to respond to regular calls. Off-duty officers are able to work police details. They are paid for, again, by the company that is doing the work. And by doing so, they provide us with extra police officers on the streets. And I'll use the example of a few years back. We had an incident at the high school where we received a 911 call. It sounded like shots were being fired at the high school. Turned out to be a nail gun, so that was good. But what happened was, we had 10 police officers at the high school in about two minutes. And part of the reason we did was because we had several detail officers that were on details that as soon as we headed that way, we cleared the air and told them, get off the road and get here. And that, so that doubled our patrol force within the first two minutes, which was extremely valuable. And it didn't, didn't cost the taxpayers any more money. We had officers coming from everywhere, and within 15 minutes, we probably would have had about 250 officers here. But those 10 officers in that few moments were what we needed. And we only had about, you know, five on patrol, so the others came from detail. So I think that we will continue to maintain police details in town. We've had, we did have some flagmen that worked on a project here in the 58 project, because the state required them to. And without radio communication, without the equipment they had, ended up with some serious traffic issues, including a delay in getting a fire engine through to a call. So I'm not, I'm still not convinced that we should go to that, and I'll continue. But.
Just thinking. The other thing was with the, in the light of what happened in Florida, and I mean, willing teachers in the schools, I know you have to, have you, I don't really need to know, but.
Chief, can I just jump in there real quick? Bill, yeah, one of the things that we do not do in public session is ever discuss any security protocols.
No, I know.
So, I mean, we can't even bring that up, nor can we respond to that. Those are done in executive session.
That's what I'm saying, I don't really.
And they're all, I just, I just wanted to jump in there.
Thank you. Yes.
How about for part-time police officers? So they're all full-time, am I correct?
Yes, we have, we have full-time police officers only, yes.
Is there any future of having part-time?
So in, within civil service, there is a category called permanent intermittents. Those are part-time, so to speak. We have used that, they come off the same civil service list. We've used that category in the past, or started to, and we just never get past it, because we're always hiring. But we'd like to use that to have some people who are permanent intermittents. And we have one who just completed the academy, Mike Shaw, who was one of our day dispatches, who will be, is a permanent intermittent, will be able to work police details. We won't be paying him for that. We'll outfit him and be able to do that. What that gives us is we get to take a look at the person while they're out there interacting with the public that do in police details and see how they react to things. And then, as we move forward, they can be hired as a full-time police officer when an opening comes. So we are using that as a process to build sort of a farm team of police officers that can then step up to the next level. And that's how we're using that as right now. So I hope that answers your question.
One of the challenges that the chief always has is that when he has to fill a position with a new recruit, then you're talking probably about nine months by the time you begin the process of interviewing, doing background checks, then getting them into academy, then getting them through the academy. And then even after that, then they still have their road time they have to do to get certified in the town. So there's a long lead-up to get somebody certified. And, you know, that's one of the things that the chief and I are working on to see if there's a way of trying to, when we know retirement's coming, and we know somebody has to retire, is trying to get somebody through the training sooner, even though that's going to be a larger cost upfront. But then again, you don't have the delay of having a person not on the force. So that's, that's another thing we're looking into.
Chief, just quickly, referencing the jump in calls you had from 2016 to 2017, that was substantially more than what the MRI study indicated. Do you think that's a one-time anomaly? Or do you think that's something that could impact budgets going forward?
So the reason, when MRI did their study, we didn't have the final numbers for 2014, I mean, 2017. So what I noticed is it's pretty consistent, about a 4%, some years more than others. It's very hard to predict. But if you look at over five years, which my, I have a chart that I put into the in-report that shows us, you'll see a fluctuation, but we're staying around 12,000 to 13,000. Sometimes a little higher, sometimes less. So I don't think it's going to, I don't believe we'll see, well, I would hope we don't see. We don't have a big jump in population, so I don't imagine we'll have a big jump like that. But there are years where it spikes, and there are years when it comes back down. So I don't think that, I think 4% is a more conservative number, and we should use that. But I just wanted to point out that that's, the number on there was just a number they estimated, and the real number was a little higher.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I knew I was going to be saying it in my, my speech here, and I didn't want to go, well, that didn't work, so.
Anybody? Anything else? That's it for us.
Okay, from the Board of Selectmen, I'll start with Mr. Robertson this time.
I have a quick question for you, chief. We heard building, we heard organizational structure, we heard policies, procedures. We heard many things that are needed. One new cop, maybe two new cops were recommended. Do you have a priority list of what you can live with and a list that you cannot live without?
Well.
Did that come out right?
Yeah, no, it didn't. I think.
It's clear in my head, but.
Everything's on there. I need, if we can get it done by June 30th, that'll be, that'll be great. We can just take a vote now to get that done. I appreciate, that'd be great. I think that we should be looking at, as we always have. I think that, as I said before, I take it very seriously, we're spending the taxpayers' money on these things. And I believe that by expending the taxpayers' money to make these improvements, we will improve the quality of service moving forward. And I believe that's what the town wants. If we had to prioritize it, I would say we get the building started and move that forward, which we are doing. And I think by moving forward with the, with the change to the organizational structure, by bringing in a second-in-command, by making another sergeant that can start working on investigations and improving that service delivered to the public, I think we'll see, I think we'll see what MRI mentioned, that it will continue to provide quality service that people don't get upset about. Some of the things that people don't even see, they mentioned about just being call takers or insurance takers of information. And a lot of times, that's what we are. We drive to a scene, we make an observation, we write it down, and the insurance company gets that, and they pay you out for your stolen TV or your crashed car. But the public expects that we're going to actually try to find out who took that. And we, we lack that ability, or we, or we have to prioritize that ability to only cases that are very highly solvable, because we're spending all the time to do it. By having a detective division, by having a true second-in-command and being able to move those forward, I think we can improve the ability of us to follow up on calls, which I believe is key to keeping the citizens happy. And additionally, that, that division can help to spread out the workload of processing firearm licenses, which, as we talked about, 357 last year. Those, those investigations are in-depth enough that, especially in today's society, in-depth enough that to try to do one a day is a, is a pretty tough accomplishment for one person. So I think as we spread the workload out a little bit with that, we'll see better services. So I think that my priority would be to get, moving forward on changing that structure. And then we can, we can accomplish the changes in structure that I'd like to see with 16 offices. And I think if we got to a 17th or potentially to an 18th, certainly that will help to improve that. But I think we can do it with the number off. Once, once we get these replacement offices hired for the, for the people retiring this year, if we get back to 16, I can make that hap, I can change that organizational structure and make it move forward with that number. And adding on the extra body. on the extra body will, will just give us a little bit more of offer and move that forward better. So, I hope that answered your question?
Yes. Thanks.
Sarah?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, chief, for, um, and tell you how much I appreciate your saying you're gonna hold everyone's feet to the fire. If, if that building comes in at a higher price, that we will be able to fund it eventually, because it makes me very uneasy, um, not having a real solid number right now. But I know we all want to move it forward, so...
Well, I, I can appreciate your concern. I, I can't say that I, I would, and I'd like to have a solid number myself. Um, and as I, as I mentioned, I think that my role on that committee and the role that you've hired me to do is to, to run your police department and, and make it better. And I believe that our police department, our team, uh, my internal committees and, and the people on the, in the police department can offer up what we really do need in a, in a police department, what we need for the size of rooms, the type of rooms, the type of equipment. And when we bring that to the table, when I bring that to the table for the building committee, we're gonna stick with what we need, not, not to a number. So, I, I don't want to sound, uh, I'm, I'm very happy that we've got a committee finally, we're moving forward, and I'm very happy that we have a preliminary number that we're moving forward on. I don't want to sound like, uh, I'm, I'm not at all, but I, but I think at the end of the day, we owe the citizens of Carver, um, a duty to spend the money wisely and build the building that we need, not...
We do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, uh, first off, um, a couple of things that you, you touched on. I am very happy to hear that you're gonna have basically subcommittees made up of your sergeants and officers, because I think it's really important to have the input from the people that are going to be living, basically living in that building, working in that building, uh, as it comes forward. We did the same thing with the fire station. Um, one thing I hope you'll keep in mind is we're looking at a building that meets your needs not only today, but, you know, the fire station was built with fifty to seventy-five years in mind, and I'm hoping that you will be doing the same for the police station. Um, I do know, you know, there, there will be undoubtedly times when you're getting, you know, do you really need something this? Can you get away with something like, maybe like this? And I ask that everybody that gets appointed to this committee will take that into consideration. I know there's a lot of scale-back, uh, on the fire station. It was, ended up as a slightly lesser structure than what was originally envisioned, but it still came out as into a great facility that will last at fifty, seventy-five years. And I look forward to having a police station that our officers, our sergeants, detectives, and command staff can be proud of, can improve the working environment, because it's hard to have a good morale if you're not in a facility that's state-of-the-art. And let's face it, what you're dealing with right now is not conducive, uh, as, as a morale booster. I think we're all fully aware of that, and I think that's, that goes to a commendation of you and your staff and the department, that they can still keep up the morale and do the great job they do, working in a, to be kind, less-than-ideal environment. So, I look forward to what could transpires on that. Um, like Michael said, you know, you gotta have a starting number somewhere. If it needs to be more, I think that's, you know, we'll take it as it comes. But I don't see the town, and I know certainly this board, it does not want a building built that does not meet your needs now and in the future. And I do not believe the taxpayers and the citizens of the town of Carver would want to finance something like that that's not needed in what you need now and for the future. So, uh, I was very happy, like I say, I'm very happy to hear that, you know, the rank and file, you know, the people that are gonna be using this facility will be having a good say, because I think it's important to get input from the people that are gonna be working there on it. Uh, other than that, uh, one thing on the MRI, uh, the MRI, on the number of calls per officer, do you have, going forward, as you're thinking out years, I know it doesn't pertain to this year's budget, but what you think is a good call number per officer? Um, looking at the list and how it, the graph was there, the number six fifty to seven hundred kept popping up, and I would, you know, do you want to keep it at least down to seven hundred if you can?
I think we should use that as a good example because we, because when they did the SWAT analysis, talked with the citizens they did, obviously they see, they're judging their level of, uh, happiness with what we're doing based on that call. So, obviously, we can, again, I think they said it's not scientific, but it's, that's what we're doing now. We should try to ma, at least maintain that, and put enough officers on to maintain that kind of call level. So, um, I think that, that's a, a good number to use, and, and we'll see if we can, if, if that number could go higher and still maintain the commitment or not. But I, I think we're, we've got a good number that we're having today, and people are happy with us, so why wouldn't we just continue that on to the future?
As far as the budget numbers themselves that we're looking at here, um, I think the, it's not an extraordinary increase in numbers. Um, under the salaries, that's all done by contract, pretty much said and done. Um, I noticed under your operations budget, um, the original budget for FY eighteen, uh, was one hundred twenty thousand and about a half. Uh, your request for FY nineteen is only up another, about a one-point-one, one-point-two-hundred-thousand. Very little really increase on that. That's probably the less-than-one-percent increase on the operation budget, by the looks, if I'm reading that right. Uh, going from what was budgeted for FY eighteen, which was one hundred twenty thousand four seventy-five, and department request and the town administrators' recommendations, one hundred and twenty-one, six ninety-eight. So, I think you're doing a great job of, you know, protecting the, the citizens' money and spending it wisely. That's what I'm trying to get across on that. So, I think you, you know, again, that's a testament to you, your staff, and your administration, and the officers and sergeants. So, I don't think, because we're gonna be voting on the entire budget as itself later on, we do not need to take any action on this particular budget separately. So...
Mr. Zou, could I just, could I just?
Chief?
So, I thank you very much for your comments on, uh, the team approach. Everything we do is a team approach. I'm just the, the fortunate person to sit up, to get to talk to you guys about it, to get to talk to the public about it. And I'm very, very fortunate and honored to be able to do that. But we do this as a team, everything we do is as a team. Um, and we're gonna involve all of our police officers to get their opinions as we move this forward. I promise you that when we're done, we're gonna have a police department that the town can be proud of, that will fit the needs of the police department from now into the future. And I think that we can, and I, I appreciate your noticing that we're still keeping our operation budget under, under control. I think that I would like you to look back on the past four years and recognize the fact that we have taken spending your money very seriously. We continue to do so. And so, when we come to you with what we need for the police station, it's what we need. It's not what we dreamed up or what we wanted. We've never done that. We've, we've, uh, we've come up with a plan to use, use equipment when we can. I, I do take it very seriously that the amount of money you give us to spend is earned by the people in this room, and the people watching on TV, and the people that live in this community, and it's hard-earned. And we should spend it very wisely, as if it was my money to spend, and, and how I would spend it in my household. So, we've done that. I think we've earned a reputation for doing that correctly. I think that reputation will carry over into how we build this building. And when we come back to you with, with the committee, with the type of building, the size building, and the money we need to build that building, I believe that you can all be rest assured that we've put our due diligence into make sure that that money's spent wisely. So, thank you for giving me a chance to talk about it tonight.
My pleasure.
And we'll move, move it forward as we keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, if you want to hang around longer, fine, or if you want to beat feet and get on out, that's, that's understandable, too.
Well, if you don't need me, I'm hungry, so...
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the town clerk. Thank you. Is this the same thing we already have? Is this something else? Oh, no. Oh, more trees died.
Trees died. It's all recycled.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Doyle, town clerk. Um, my budget is fairly vanilla every year, with the exception of elections. And I'd like to, um, start out with the elections. So, we have three elections this year, fiscal year nineteen, the state primary, which was recently rescheduled from September eighteenth to September fourth. Um, that is gonna be the day after Labor Day, just for everybody's information. Um, absentee ballots that are usually due by noon the day before, which is normally a Monday, will be due on the Friday before now. Um, the state election on November sixth, twenty eighteen, which is a governor's race, so it will be a very busy election. And finally, the annual town election on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. So, I have budgeted for those three elections, as you'll see in my elections, um, and registration operations budget, as well as my election salaries budget. In addition to the elections, I have budgeted for ten days of state mandated early voting prior to the November election, as is now required in accordance with the election reform law that was implemented in twenty sixteen. Um, that was very successful in twenty sixteen, I will add. Um, we did pretty well with that. We had, uh, we had about, we had well over two thousand, um, early voters for twenty sixteen for the first time in Massachusetts. So, we did really well for a small town. Um, what I did not budget for, and you'll see on the second two pages, um, what I wanted to do is give you all, uh, kind of a general idea of what is required of us for early voting. So, there is the mandated hours that we have to have, uh, coverage for, and then there are elected hours that we have an option to have coverage for. Um, the last election they did the early voting, we were given a stipend, a small stipend, to be open on the Saturday, the first Saturday of early voting. And so, I took advantage of that because it paid for the salaries of the people that worked that day, and I thought it was advantageous for the town. Um, the additional location, we, we do not get any other stipends at this point in time for early voting, so it is costing the town some money. The additional location was a choice that we, um, collectively made as the board of selectmen and, and Michael and myself, uh, talked about the advantages to having additional location down in Cranberry Village for, um, a lot of the seniors that live in that area. And it's open to everybody. So, if you have an, an additional location, it's open to everybody. Um, what I did not budget for, as you'll see on the next couple of pages, is you'll see the state primary. And in accordance with the early voting regulations, the laws that were implemented in twenty sixteen, it was only supposed to be for the biannual, um, state election, not state primary, not town election, nothing else. Well, um, our fearless leader, Bill Galvin, has, uh, pursued legislature for early voting for the state primary. Um, he is looking to do five days of early voting, and this is just something I've just recently found out. So, um, that was not budgeted, and I just wanted to give you folks an idea of how much extra it may cost us in, um, election expenses. So, that's what I've handed out to you on the second two pages. So, it could be anywheres from twelve to fifteen hundred, depending on how we implement it, and how many days they have it, and, um, what is required of us during that time. Um, the laws change seemingly on a daily basis. So, so we will see, um, how that's gonna play out. But it is not something I had originally put into my elections budget because I wasn't anticipating it.
Isn't it fun how they come up with ideas, but we have to pay the price for them?
Well, it's, yeah. It's, and, and as you can see, between the two elections, we're talking, um, close to five thousand dollars, if not a little over, almost five thousand dollars for the two elections for early voting. I have put the worst-case scenario, so we always have to have two people, um, we have a check-in and a checkout. We do a separate location. We do not do our office. Some, um, much smaller towns will do their office, but we don't have the staff to do that. We, we had on an average of two hundred and fifty to four hundred people a day coming out to early vote. We don't have the, um, ability to do that and still do our daily work in our office. So, we had a separate location for it. It worked much better. We, there were times where we had, um, lines going down the hallway for early voting, and, uh, we just never would have gotten the, the work that was necessary to get done on a daily basis completed if we didn't have a separate location with separate people working it. Um, so, I hired the election workers to do that. Um, it also made it for a more stable location as well, where the ballots were a little more secure, things were, you know, more focused. Um, we just felt better about doing it in that way. So, with the early voting, um, we are looking to maybe, um, increase the budget if necessary. I may have to come back to you folks. It may not be something we have to do right away. Um, on the other hand, on that note, um, the Mass Town and City Clerks Association and our legislative, um, agent, Tom Joyce, has been working with specific legislators to, um, change these laws a little bit so that the, it's not as expensive to, um, create an early voting situation for the town. Um, so, right now, we're required to, um, have envelopes. We're required to put the ballot in the envelopes. We're required to inform people why they have to put the ballot in the envelopes. So, we have to have extra staff to do all that. And then, on election day, we have to have staff to check those ballots in, check them out again, slice them open, um, feed them through the, the voting machines, as some people might have called it, stuffing the ballot box, you know. Um, we're hoping to change all that. And if we do that, it should, it should also, um, reduce the workload and reduce the cost. But, um, in the meantime, I am under the understanding that Governor Baker right now has a, uh, a proposed early voting, I'm sorry, has a, um, bill to be signed, and, um, it's for, sorry, hold on one second. I know it's one million seventy thousand, there we go, one million seventy thousand dollars to, uh, to supplement our budgets for the early voting that we spent on in twenty sixteen. So, I don't know how much of that we're supposed to be getting of that one million seventy thousand dollars. Um, suspecting that probably the cities will be getting a big chunk of it, but we should be getting something back from twenty sixteen. So, that's, that's something to look forward to. Um, also to keep in mind, when I did the early voting budgets, I did worst-case scenarios because we are working with Suzanne Baum, the state auditor, in order to try to get a better handle of the true costs of early voting. And by showing everything that we're spending money on, additional staffing in the office to cover all the extra work that we do in the office for the early voting, and all of that is recorded there, we're trying to get a clear picture of it. So, um, Suzanne Baum, the state auditor, the secretary of state's office, are all very well aware that this is costing the municipalities a lot of extra money. Um, and, you know, for a small town, this is a lot of money, I think. But, um, I am having a difficult time justifying in my mind why we are having, uh, why we're considering early voting for a state primary when our average turnout is about ten percent of the voters, which is about eight hundred and thirty-five voters. So, for, you know, staff to be sitting there for five days, then run an entire election for, you know, the twelve hours or fifteen hours that we're there, it's, um, it's a lot of expense. Um, and, you know, you hope to see a bigger turnout, but that's not necessarily the case. Um, last time we had the early voting, it was not the case, and it's, it could just be because it's new. So, um, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, because that was my first concern, and that was new. And, uh, we're still waiting to hear what the results are gonna be for the early voting for the state primary, and I will let you folks know about that. Um, other than that, uh, I will tell you that, like I said, my budget is fairly vanilla. We, um, we have been pretty much status quo with the town clerk's operating budget and the town clerk's salaries with the union raises of the average two-percent increases. Um, I will tell you, uh, I did pass my Massachusetts certification just, just about a month ago, and it got presented to me.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Got presented to me at, um, a conference in Devon's, um, in February, where everybody got the flu. It all came home with the flu. Um, so, that was a two-hundred-and-fifty-question exam, all based on Mass general laws, and you needed an eighty percent to pass. I got a ninety-two. to pass, I got a 92. So I was pretty happy about that. It was a lot of work, a lot of extra credits that I had to build up as well in training and courses and programs and that sort of thing, online webinars. So it was not just the exam, but it was courses I've taken over the past few years, and you have to be a town clerk for three years before you can even apply for it. So I was relieved to get that behind me. And other than that, the staff is doing fantastic in my office, they're working as hard as ever. Some of those figures, you'll also know that sometimes I will use senior work-off people to cover, I will use election workers to cover, I will use Board of Registars to cover some of those hours, so they're already getting stipends or they're getting discounts on their taxes. So I do try to save some money in that respect, but for audit purposes and for Suzanne Baum, I want to show everything that, that is realistically expected of us, so.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. So, do you have any questions?
My next committee.
I'm just curious of the justification for the early voting. I mean, I don't know that we've talked about it at our meetings, but...
For, for all...
Yeah, I mean, if you only have 800 people, is that...
It's state mandated.
I know, I'm just, I'm curious why they mandate...
I don't think that, I think that's pretty much above her pay grade on that.
I know, I'm just, I'm just...
Well, it's, so it is, it's, it's part of the election reform law that was implemented in 2016. From that law, several different things were changed. We had preregistration for 16-year-olds and 17-year-olds. So now they, when they register to vote, they go into a queue, instead of just being kicked out and you're too young, you can't vote, you can't register yet. So now they go into a queue because they can get a license or, you know, they can go through the RMV. And before, they were just getting kicked out of our system because they were too young to register to vote. Now they go into a queue. So that was one of the, the aspects of the election reform law. The other was the early, early voting, which was the big, big one. And I'm trying to think back now what some of the other aspects of that law was. There was a few things that changed, oh, automat, online voter registration, that was a big one, online voter registration. So now you can register to vote from wherever you are, online, and no more excuses for the last day to register to vote, because you can register at any time, from the convenience of your home, you know. And so we have seen an increase in voter registrations, which is kind of nice. But they're continually looking at new, new laws. Early voting has been successful for other, other states. It was popular for us for the first time in Massachusetts in 2016. I think we got a pretty good turnout. We just didn't notice, most towns, I think, statistically, we did a survey among all the towns, and certain questions were asked, and one of them was the turnout. And statistically, the turnout did not change a whole lot from the previous presidential election, but, but it's hard to say why. It could be maybe not enough people knew about it yet, or it could be that there wasn't the interest in that last election, or, you know, there could be a whole, you know, series of different reasons why that, that didn't change much. But, but then, for all we know, it could change immensely this, this next state election. So, you know, we're prepared for it, we'll see what happens. But I don't anticipate the same response for the primary, I just don't. Historically, in Carver, we have never gotten a huge turnout for primaries, and so to see a lot of early voting turnout, I'm, I'll be surprised. I'll be pleasantly surprised, but I'll be surprised.
Through the chair. Lynn, can we use volunteers for any of this?
Well, so the election workers, I need to be able to rely on them. You can get people to volunteer, and I know some towns have tried to do that, but when there's, sometimes when there's not a reason, you know, unless you're really super passionate and you are determined that this is something you want to do, it's easy to say, I don't feel like going in today at 6:00 in the morning, you know, and then I'm stranded without an election worker. So I find, I mean, they work hard, they do work hard, they go through a lot of training. I train them annually, every single year I train, and they all have different types of training. There's wardens, there's precinct clerks, there's...
Can you also use senior work-off people to assist as well?
Well, that's what I was saying earlier, when I was talking...
That kind of answers that question, is there?
When I was talking about the, the paper that I passed out, some of those hours, like the office hours, I'll use senior work-off people, because some of the senior work-off people are election workers as well, so. Or I'll use the Board of Registars, because they can do certain things in my office that they're allowed to do, and they get a stipend, but they're not paid hourly necessarily. So, so I will use different people like that. Last year, not last year, is it last year, almost two years ago now, we were caught off guard a little bit with the amount of work volume that we had to deal with in the office for early voting because of the whole envelope process where you had to, you know, separate the envelopes by precinct, put them in order by street. It was a lot of work at the end of the day, after, you know, 300 or 400 people have come through and early voted, and you're doing all your extra work. So I was paying union workers in my office to work overtime to do that at the time because we, we just needed to keep up with the work. So this, this time around, we're a little bit more prepared, we're going to hire maybe an election worker, or, or a senior work-off person, or somebody like that. But I was saying earlier, Michael, that the reason why I put all that information down on those papers, to show you the number of people that we have to hire, is for audit purposes with the state auditor, just so they understand what's really involved in what we have to do, so.
Lynn, just, you mentioned earlier that during the early voting process that you had a line of people down the hall. So I guess, did you find, I guess, number one, that because of so many people coming into early vote, that it affected your office getting other things done that would normally happen in the town clerk's office? And I, and that's number two, did it affect, you know, the townspeople at all, trying to get in and get access to the town clerk's office? Did that cause a problem at all?
No, no. And that's why, that's why we did have it separated. So we had a line going down the hall, but it was a line in the lower level where we had the early voting. It was not affecting our office. We were indirectly affected because, you know, people downstairs would come upstairs and ask us questions, or there would be concerns, or we would be checking in on those areas every once in a while. But we didn't, we specifically did it this way because I was concerned about the turnout. I did not want it to affect my office when we were trying to do our daily work and prepare for a presidential election. And, you know, so we have a lot, a lot of work to do in that respect anyways, never mind do the early voting on top of it. So, yeah, so we had it in a separate location, and I think it worked out really, really well. I really do.
Do you and town clerks in general anticipate early voting increasing as time goes forward? Do you think...
I, I would suspect so. I think, you know, where it was new, maybe people just weren't sure of it, maybe they weren't confident with it, maybe they didn't want to put their, you know, ballot in an envelope versus in the tabulator. That's all stuff that the Mass Town Clerks Association is working to change, because we would rather see it, you know, deposited into the tabulator. We would rather see it not in an envelope, because that's all extra work for, for, you know, our staff, and it takes a lot, long time. We check them in and we check them out during early voting, and then we have to check them in and check them out again during the election. That can take, I mean, if you have precincts, we had probably 1,300 or so early voting ballots. That took quite a while to check in, read off the name, check it off the list, go to another location, read off the name, check it off the list, open the envelope, feed it into the tabulator. That was 1,300 ballots we had to manually do individually ourselves versus the person doing it by themselves. So it was a lot more work for the staff, it really was. Yep. Yep. So we're, we're pushing to, to make changes, but it's difficult. It's difficult.
Thank you.
Sarah, anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Lynn. You're welcome.
Dave? Nothing about the budget. Congratulations on the certification.
Oh, thank you.
I know how much work, we talked about that, you went into that, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Definitely, congratulations on the certification. I know it's a lot of work, not only just taking the test, but as you mentioned, you know, preparing for all the courses you have to take. A couple of questions. If we have to do the extra early voting for a primary, that be the budget that's for election and registration as opposed to the town clerk operating?
Correct.
And...
There's, there's salary, there's two. There's election salaries and then election operations.
And would those both go up?
The, the salaries, the salaries would go up.
Using more salaries? Just the salaries?
Just the salaries.
Okay, and so that would be, if they do do it, you're looking at what, about a $3,000 increase?
No, possibly 1,200 to 1,500, just for the state primary.
Okay.
Yep. And that's, and that's, that's based on the worst-case scenario, if, if I have election, you know, if I have senior work-off people, if I have Board of Registars, that all, that all kind of chips it down too, so.
And we do have ways to go ahead and address that, either through transferring funds from one line item to another that falls under our, Bailey Wick has a board, or you might have to go to Finance Committee because they have a reserve fund too. So that little bit of money, I don't think it's anything we have to really worry about. But I do appreciate you bringing it forward, so we're fully aware of it.
Great.
And with that, unless, you want to hang around, like Chief Dufulley is?
I'm kind of tired.
Someone's getting, someone's getting out of the office, at least if not the town hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the Finance Committee, that's it for the budget presentations. If you want to go ahead and adjourn, but still stay for the rest of the town administrators' update, considering it worked out.
Or you can have a meeting next door, too. That's right. I wanted to add a motion to adjourn?
Make a move.
Second?
Call a paper?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for attending. Appreciate it. All right. Let's see, since we were supposed to already be into the Board of Selectmen update...
Well, that's because Lynn, you know, used up a little bit more of a lot of time.
Oh, Lynn! I was going to blame somebody else.
She got blamed last meeting, so, you know, I just wanted to keep it up.
I was going to blame somebody else, and it wasn't going to be the town clerk or the police chief, but. Carrying on, Mr. Milonowski, if you would continue on with your town administrator update, please.
Yes, Elaine has already put my comments in here into the minutes, so I'm just going to repeat those. Let's see, elementary school, the project is running on time and on budget. For the high school repair...
Wait, whoa, 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 not under budget?
Under budget. Under budget.
Because I believe we still have a large, I know you want, we want to rush through this, but I want people to know that I believe there's still a large percentage of the contingency that is yet to be spent and even, not even planned to. I know we're funding and using some of it for technology and whatnot.
That's correct. I mean, we are using some of the contingency, as was mentioned tonight, for technology and for that wider lawn mower, but these are owner-initiative contingencies. These aren't because the project had issues. We've managed the project in extremely low contingencies have been taken out of the project, from that standpoint. So that's actually a really good thing compared to most other projects. So again, that is, that is running significantly under budget and is on schedule. The middle high school, we're just in the process of doing the final testing for some of the, the windows and making sure that they're all up to, to, to what our expectations are. There may be some items that we need to, that we are continuing to work with the manufacturer to make sure there's a warranty, or there's certain funds set aside just to maintain those over the long term. But we're pretty much just about done that project.
It's been going on a long time.
Yeah, and it's just the, again, the roof is done, the boilers are done, it's just the, the, some of the windows, we've, and it's, there's three different sets of windows, and it's the windows around the metal paneling. Putting a window with some type of a flange against the metal paneling is a challenge.
That's mainly the library, right?
That is correct. That is correct. So we're working on seals, making sure that that's there protecting. But again, your, your team and Dave Sigintoff is, is taking the lead on making sure that that's done to a satisfactory, to get the, the long-term durability we're paying for. The sports complex, I think I've already spoken about that. The CPC is moving forward with its funding for that, as well as the town, the council on aging at the library. And one of the things that the, in our last meeting, is they, they don't want it to be called a community center, so it's a council, because they want to have their own independent space. Technically, some want to have their own independent building, but, so calling it a community center was, they don't want that at all. So at the last meeting, and I should have taken off the agenda, they want it to be just called the COA Edition, if it's going to be an addition. And some in their mind, it shouldn't be an addition, but it's on the library, not a community center. I tried, but they're just pushing back on that hard. So we're having our public meeting on that on March 14th at 7:00, which will be held at the library. The police station, again, we talked about that tonight. I mentioned the four core members we have on all of our building committees, which is Bill Harriman, who we have chair our committees. Followed by that, we have our private sector builder, which is John Deli Piscoli. Then we have our operations and management, maintenance director, which is Dave Sigintoff, and then myself, which town meeting votes me to kind of manage these projects. So the four of us are the same crew that's on all of our committees, so there's continuity to make sure that we carry through the success we've had with all of them. Then when we get to a particular building, then we obviously get the, the department head, which will be Chief Dufulley, and Dave Robinson's going to be on this committee as well. And then through the building user standpoint, the chief actually sent out a questionnaire to see who was interested of that. We had four officers actually apply to that, and we're actually appointing Brian Beriot to the, to the, to the position. And what Brian brings to, to the thing is that, you know, the committee has construction understanding, because we have the core people that have done the other buildings and understand how 149 works, understand construction. So I mean, that's what the basis of the core is. And then when we add the other people, it's to bring in what their knowledge is of the users, what the needs are of the department and how the department should function, whether it's a police department or COA or whatever it may be. So what Brian brings to the table is that, because he's had the opportunity to work in two different communities for a long time out of two stations, and Wareham's no better than Carver, but at the same point, he's experienced two different stations. He's also spent a long part of his career working in drug enforcement on a task force that he would work out of many other stations on an extended period of time, and particularly in the back part of the stations, you know, where you bring people into the Sallyport and all that. So he has a broader knowledge of having done that in multiple different locations. Obviously, he's one of the younger officers on here, so he's vested in the long-term success of the department. He's not going to be retiring in 2025, like some others have said they are. And so in any case, that rounds out our department, our, our, the committee. So we'll have our first meeting sometime, just going to work with the chief, and we'll set something up for that next week and get that moving along.
Okay, before you go on, I would entertain a vote by the Board of Selectmen in support of the police building committee as outlined by the town administrator right now.
Make a motion for that.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, besides the fact that Mr. Robertson's on it? Sorry, I couldn't resist. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Great, thank you. Then very quickly, also, before we get to, to Ken Morrison, is the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District, Dave Robinson's on there, as well as Bill Dugan and John Cotter. We're having our next meeting tomorrow night, and the committee and the staff between all three towns have been working diligently to, to kind of rectify the situation that we have there. You've seen some of the articles on that, and I'll just leave it at that for right now. So there's a lot of work going on behind, in the process with everybody to try to figure out how best to straighten the operation out today, the operation for the next three years, and then what happens after three years. after three years. And so we're aggressively working on that.
I know there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, so I appreciate Dave, Bill's work on that, John Carter. Michael, please pass our thanks to the other town administrators for the work. I know this is not an easy task that you have all found yourselves thrust into, but we very much appreciate the effort you guys are putting in to correct the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And with that, if I could ask Ken to come up, and, and I think as the agenda says, and I'd like to have Dave Robinson jump in here as well. Ken has decided after, was it 14 years?
16.
16, who's counting. After 16 years of, you know, really leading the town and working with our veterans, that he is looking to retire. Having said that, he came to Elaine and I several weeks ago and says, "I'll take as long as it takes for me to retire. Here's some dates that I'm kind of would like to do, but if you need me longer, that's fine. But most importantly, I want to make sure there's an orderly transition because our veterans, you know, not only have earned this, but they deserve it, and we should honor them to keep up all the hard work that, that Ken has done where he has about 40 clients right now." So with that, Mr. Robinson attended the MMA conference and got a lot of education on regional concepts for dealing with delivery of veteran service programs. And, and after that, Ken and, and Dave met together, and Ken kind of presented some solutions that he had in some way that he felt comfortable and who he would leave in proper hands to help manage this. And it actually has three components. One is we have Mark right now, who worked for us for about 15 to 19 hours. We have him in next year's budget for 19 hours, so he'll be up to 19 hours. So he currently is in the office and knows many of the clients. And, you know, part of what Ken has recommended is that we partner with Quinn, I'm sorry, I did it again, with Plymouth, Director of Veteran Services, who has, you know, more than a decade of experience running her office with obviously a multimillion-dollar budget compared to our $200,000 budget. And she is there to help provide continuous oversight. And then today, at her recommendation and at Ken's recommendation, we interviewed a new gentleman by the name of Joe Hickley. And Joe has served as a Veterans Office Officer for eight years before he recently retired a year and a half ago, and moved to Plymouth. He's not from Plymouth, but he moved to Plymouth. And he's been helping out the Veterans Office over there, just, you know, kind of volunteering, and, but he's fully certified, and he wants to do some work in his, in his retirement for about 15 hours a week. So after an interview today, at Ken's recommendation with Dave and Elaine, we've moved forward in, in hiring Joe, who will really start working more full-time for his 15 hours in April, but we're going to have some transition between that time period and now. So, you know, it's sad to see Ken leaving because he's done so many things for 16 years, but in Ken's true nature is that when he left and retired, he wanted to make sure the system was running as good or better than when he was running it. And he's actually helped design a program to take us to that next level. And for that, I think that that, that's amazing right there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Robinson and add more color to what I've just said.
I don't know about that, but I had the opportunity to work with Ken just recently, and he is, you are, I'll speak to you, Ken, you are a detailed, orientated person. And I loved what you did for my family, and I appreciate that very much. That was very nice of you and help us out in that aspect. But what, in a bigger, broader picture, you announced your retirement, which is, you know, my hat's off to you, but in grand fashion, you put in a replacement plan for us to just look at and interview, and, and it all worked out. So, you know, everything you do is of great detail, Ken, and I just absolutely had a pleasure working with you in the short time that I've been around town. But, you know, you're a great guy, Ken, and I hope to see you around the hall.
Please, thank you very much, but as much as it was my plan to have a succession plan, it was really for my clients. I mean, this town is really special to my family. And we go back, back to the 80s, and Alan, you were on the fire department when you, you guys came and, and did what you could for, for us. So it was, it was not only, you know, part of the job to make sure there was a smooth transition. I've got a great debt to this town. And, and this retirement would have been a while back, a little while before now, but I didn't have that planned. And it's just something that Michael said to me, I don't know how long ago it was, but he said, "You know, Ken, after you're gone, we're going to have an office with two people in it." And, you know, that was the key. I mean, that's the, was, that's why, that's the piece that was missing. I was trying to do this by myself, and back in 2002 when I started, it was a dream. It was really, you had time to do everything. Now, we're, we're almost at 40 families. And let me tell you, it just doesn't stop. The phone, walk-ins and computer, and it's, it's just, you really need that, two, two people in that office, which it was before I took over. And so I'm glad to see that everything worked out and that we just, I picked up the phone one day and, and called Roxanne over in Plymouth, and I said, "I'm really, I really need somebody part-time to help me out. Going crazy." And she sent over a friend of hers, and that's Mark Pennio, who's been with us for a year now. And just recently, I was getting closer with the, the yearning to retire from, from veterans, and she told me about another friend of hers that retired, and Joe, and he had just moved to Plymouth. So all the stars aligned, and I'm able to feel confident, and this is the important part, I'm feeling very confident that the level of customer service that our veterans community has come to expect is going to continue. And we went over budgets, we went over numbers and everything, and it's just, it's really, I couldn't ask for a better plan. So I really want to thank Roxanne and Michael and everybody else for helping the, and especially you, Dave, because you kind of had a hand in that when you said, "Hey, I'm going to this MMA conference," and what do I need to ask there? And the first thing out of my mouth was, "You need to look into regionalization."
Yeah, yeah, it worked out. Stars are aligned.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, thank you again. It's been my honor to, to serve as the veterans' agent for the last 16 years, and, and I'm, I'm sure everything is going to get even better.
And not only is Ken's first thought into taking care of his existing customers, if you will, the existing veterans, but the finance committee will like this part, is that Ken certified under the veterans program, and it takes a while to get certified. Now with that certification, the town receives 75% reimbursement. If Ken was not certified, he'd get 50%. The new person that Ken's bringing on is certified. So Ken's always thinking.
Ken, I, this comes as a complete surprise to me. So I, I know the town is going to miss you a great deal and all the veterans you serve, but thank you for having the foresight to get a plan in place because they are very important to us.
Yep. Like I said, my pleasure.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ken, I think you're probably one of the, many of the unsung heroes that work in Town Hall because, you know, outside of the veterans who know you very well, a vast majority of the town have no idea the important role you have played these last 16 years and the tremendous job you do. And the replacements are going to have big shoes to fill. I'm sure they'll do a great job, but I just want to thank you for your 16 years of service to the town of Carver and to the veterans of the town of Carver.
Thank you.
Thank you much. That's it? Unless you want to, unless you want to just hang around a little more?
No, no, I'm good.
Everybody does that, although I've seen the finance committee's still here.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, moving on to board of selectmen update. Ms. Hewens?
I really have nothing, Alan.
Okay.
Mr. Robertson?
I have nothing as well, Alan.
Okay, well, mine is only just a reminder, March 14th, 7:00 PM in the library, that's downstairs, the main, main meeting room there, for the hearing on the new proposed council of aging. Those of you who have concerns, questions, ideas, that's the time to get there and let your voice be heard because out there in the public, there may be three or four good nuggets of ideas that can be utilized in the construction of this facility because we want to have the best facility we can for our senior citizens. So 7:00, maybe get there a little early so we can start on time. I'm anticipating a decent-sized crowd, but I really hope everybody goes there.
Mr. Chairman, just on that, there is some misinformation that's going around on social media, and at that meeting, you know, all the facts will come out, so I just ask people to withhold their comments from hearing from other people in social media until they know what the facts are.
Right.
Because we did discuss those two weeks ago at a meeting, and those were laid out in the slide presentation. We'll be doing that on the 14th, so some of the rumors that are out there will be, you know, again, shot down again.
And as it was stated before, you know, the plans that are out there for people to see aren't the final plans by any stretch of the imagination. There will be changes as, because we haven't even really had an architect have a first shot at it with the building committee. Bill Harriman will be running the meeting. It's the chairman of the building committee. Those of you who don't know Bill, he's very thorough. He will lay things out quite clearly, but he listens, and that's the most important thing. As the chairman of that committee, he listens to what people are saying, and he will take those ideas that are brought forward at that meeting. Other than that, I don't think I have anything. So let's move on to chapter 61A. What up? Oh, I'm sorry you guys had to sit through all this.
No, that's all right.
Nothing of the education you got. Not necessarily wanted, but if you could use the microphone and identify yourself, please, sir.
Alex Johnson?
Of Carver?
Yes, of Carver.
Address?
17 Wareham Street.
Okay.
Sorry, it's my first time.
That's quite all right. So...
You're looking for a chapter 61A? You want to just kind of describe the property and what you're looking to do with it? Uh, no, I'm actually looking for you guys to just tell me that you do not want to purchase it, just because the first right of refusal is to the town. I'm trying to sell it. I'm closing on Friday on the property, so.
Oh, so it's kind of important we vote on this today.
Yes.
Very important.
Mr. Chair?
I'm a su, uh, go ahead.
So I have a question. So is this a residential property now?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's mixed use. So there's agricultural and it's cranberry bogs and a house with a connected garage.
Okay.
Lodge garage.
All right, so it's a, it's a, it's both, it has?
Right, the, the chapter land would be the cranberry bogs. The, the house itself, obviously, is not in chapter land. That's just, that's what the, they're purchasing the whole thing.
Okay, and it says in the document it would stay in the same, same tax classification?
What I understand, they plan on keeping it in chapter.
Okay. And I was just wondering, normally when we receive these, we get a site plan? Did the land use departments receive a site plan?
No, I didn't, I never knew we needed one of those. Nobody said they needed that.
Yeah, well, it's standard, because I don't know, I mean, I've got to trust our town planner and our conservation agent here, but I don't know how they know what they're looking at if they have no site plan.
Uh, I mean, I needed a site plan for when I signed up for the chapter 61A, but for just, you know, giving you guys first right of, you know, purchasing the property.
So we can see what we're actually voting on.
Oh, okay. I'm wondering if it's not required because it's not leaving chapter 61, it's staying as 61 by the new purchaser, so that might have a bearing on it.
That may be.
Yeah, the town doesn't have any interest in the property.
Right. I'll take a motion.
Well, the town usually does see a plan. That's all I'm saying, yeah.
Take a motion?
I'll take a motion. I will, uh...
Make a motion.
Make a motion, yeah, I'm so sorry to refuse any purchase option.
To decline.
To decline.
Second.
Okay, hearing, motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor saying of agreeing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Have fun on Friday.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All done.
Sorry for the delay.
All right, next up is voting on the FY19 budget, as we have heard from all the departments now. Do we want to vote on it to take forward to the, an article for town meeting? Keeping in mind, there are only three of us here.
You're looking for me to make a motion?
Well, no, I, well, yeah, if you can make a motion, I got a question.
Then you got a discussion.
Right.
Well, I've seen everything I need to see, so I can make a motion to be comfortable enough to bring that to a town.
To approve the budget as, as it's been presented to us?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, I'll throw one out there because we have not officially heard unless you've gotten the text from the school committee meeting from tonight because they were voted, the school committee was voting on their budget. Have we heard from them?
I have a text.
You have a text?
I have a text.
Could you please read the text?
No vote on budget.
They voted against it, or they just didn't vote on it?
No vote. No vote. So what has happened is that last week, when Scott put the agenda forward, he wasn't sure if he was going to have to make layoffs. He's since resolved that, that he doesn't have to make layoffs, and tied into that is there's a vote on school choice that is going to come up at their next meeting on March 12th. And, and so what Scott was concerned about was that if the, and he was going to ask the school committee if they were willing to vote on the budget tonight, which is balanced and there's no layoffs, so it, you know, and the number's the same number that we gave them back in November, so it's, it's no surprise what their number is, it's just how they internally make that work, that he was concerned they, they wouldn't vote on, they, he may not get them a, a unanimous vote on the budget tonight because at their next meeting is when they're voting on school choice. If the school committee votes down school choice, and they were counting on some revenue coming in for school choice, then they'd have to go back and look at redoing their budget. So, you know, Scott gave me a 50-50, if you will, whether they would move forward with it tonight. He says, again, he, he's not concerned they're not going to vote the number, it's just that because there's still some discussion on whether or not they want to do school choice or not do school choice, it may impact how they configure their budget from there.
For legal ease purposes, I would be more comfortable with an amended motion approving this pending the ratification by the Carver School Committee of the budget number as it currently sits in the, in the FY19 budget.
So amended, so moved to amend.
Yep, I'll, I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
No, yeah, what he said.
So can we restate that for the record freely?
That's what the, that's what the, that's what you just made a motion for.
The amendment, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Elaine just wants you to restate it.
Oh, Elaine, basically, it's, this, we are voting in favor, to vote in favor of the FY19 budget for town meeting as presented pending ratification by the school committee of the school budget as appears in our FY19 budget.
Thank you, sorry about that.
And I stated a holiday, didn't I, it's rest last night. Okay, any further discussions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Oh, let's see, just went into this time of starting of town meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
This is because I got confused, so I'm going to take the blame on this one.
Yep.
Because I thought we, I wasn't sure if we'd actually at an earlier meeting voted a 6:30 start time on the 10th.
We did.
So is it, is that everybody's recollection?
I seem to recall we were already talking about this.
I don't remember it.
Okay, so, and you wanted to say something?
Yes, I mean, the 6:30 is, is what it is. We had scheduled our town meeting
We had scheduled our town meeting for April 10.
Right.
And we, you know, in the last few years, we've scheduled it before town meeting, I mean, before the town vote for elections.
Right.
Because it didn't make sense. I think, Alan, when you and Ron were done, you'd be like, it just doesn't make sense for us to get elected, and then two days later, you have a town meeting, and it's like, well, now what do we do?
Yeah.
That all being said, is the way the calendar's working this year is that on the 28th of April is actually when the elections are. And we normally make sure we don't schedule town meeting during school break, which is the 17th.
Yep.
Now, the reason why I'm saying this is that, you know, again, that we may have to move heaven and earth, but I'm not sure if it's going to be that difficult. Because the school committee is not going to be voting on their final budget to the 12th, and because there's a town meeting bylaw that now says 30 days, is we're cutting that a little close, so.
Maybe moving it to the 17th?
Well, that'll be school vacation week to the 24th.
But why can't we have town meeting?
Well, we could do it the 17th. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking right now that given, and again, the school committee is just going through its process. It was under the impression it may have to lay off people. We've worked with them, so they don't have to lay off people. So that kind of jerry-rigged their whole schedule around.
Well, we'll need to get with the school department to make sure the auditorium is available for that.
Right.
Now, my second thing is if we want to make this change, do we want to wait till we have more, a higher number of board members present? Or I would prefer, I'm kind of torn on the one side. Yes, I'd like to have the full board here to vote on it, but by the same token, if we're going to be making a change, I want that out there as soon as possible, so everybody, you know, nobody can say, well, I didn't realize that there was a change.
Right, and what I would just suggest is that if you do decide that the change does make sense and it's starting to look that way, is that, you know, give us the authority to make it either the 17th or the 24th, or just one of those days. Assuming we can get everything lined up tomorrow, and if we can't get everything lined up by noon tomorrow, then it stays on the 10th. And when I say lined up, is making sure the auditorium's available that two days, making sure our moderator's in town, making sure our town council, those are the three components that I need to have there to make town meeting work. And then I just want to run down and just triple-check with Lynn, too.
I would feel, I think, I think it's given what's transpired with the school department, the fact that we still have to go through all the warrants now, and I'm anticipating some discussions on some of the warrant articles. I would, it'll be up to the pleasure of the board, but I would look at, I'd be willing to entertain a motion for the 24th if it's available.
I think that's a good idea, too. I mean, we obviously need to wait for the school committee, and, yeah, so moved.
Okay.
So can I just suggest that?
Yeah.
You have the 24th as option number one? If there's a concert or something that we can't do the 24th, then we move it to the 17th?
To the 17th.
Yeah.
So 24th is option one, 17th is option two. A decision is made by noon tomorrow, assuming all the key players can commit to that.
All right, did you take that as an amended motion, Sarah?
And you don't need any more time than just tomorrow?
Well, I want to get it done. I'm just, tomorrow, not noon.
He will make it done, he will make it so.
Well, I mean, suppose we can't get in touch with somebody?
That's his problem. We've given him direction.
I'm going to go try to knock down one of my checks real quick.
So I amend the motion to make April 24th our first choice, April 17th a second choice, and that Michael will find out as quickly as possible.
Okay, I'll go along. Second. All right, motion made in the seconded. Have you got all that, Elaine? Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, while we're waiting for Michael to come back, one thing I forgot to mention under selectmen notes is for those who may have not yet filled out their administrator evaluation and gone over it with Michael, please get that done. I'd like to have a executive session sometime in March to, for us to go over the evaluation and then go to, do the final presentation in public session. So that just, if that's possible. All right, moving on. Oh, one other thing on the library, the COA public meeting, that will not be a live broadcast on Area 58, because it's not possible, but I'm 99% sure, and we'll make sure that it is taped for later broadcast. Peter, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, we'll find out, because I know Mr. Clark is off and running. All right, moving on for minutes licenses, topics, approval of the Harvest Triathlon with police details on June 9. The chief has disappeared.
I move that we approve this subject to the public safety departments.
They have all approved it.
And they've all approved it? Okay, so I move we approve.
Second.
Motion made in the seconded. All those, any further discussion? Hearing, none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, minutes, I would entertain a motion to postpone dealing with those minutes because I can't vote on them, so they'd only leave two of you to vote on, and I don't think that constitutes necessity, rule of necessity.
No. So I move that we postpone voting on the minutes.
Second.
Okay, for discussion, hearing, none. All those in favor of postponing the vote on the minutes of 2/6/18, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll take care of those on our next meeting. Next meeting, it's scheduled here for March 6. Is Mr. Clark back by then?
He is not.
When is Mr. Clark back? As I was looking at that, I was thinking to myself, I don't think he's going to be here.
Right.
And I want as full a quorum as possible when we go over those articles. I think it's important that we have as many here as we can to debate those and, you know.
So two quick updates, also another email regarding tonight with the school committee. The conversation was positive on school choice, and they're anticipating it's going to pass at the next meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda, so they couldn't vote tonight. So again, that looks like it's going to take its due course. Just spoke to Lynn Doyle, and she doesn't see any red flags. She may extend voter registration for a few more days, she's just got to calculate that. But either day, she doesn't see any major issues of going to the 17th or the 24th.
Like I said, we voted 24th as that primary, and I think it's better to have a longer lead time on that. That way, we're not, because if we run into a snag, then we're going to discuss the articles, which I don't think we can do on the 6th, because Mr. Clark won't be here, at least in, I want to have the best chance. So I would rather have the extra time for us to debate articles and, you know, get it done right than trying to meet a deadline of April 10th. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that being the case, do we want to put our next meeting up till the 13th then? Or do you want to go like the 8th or 9th? Because I believe he's back on Wednesday, the 7th, isn't he? I don't remember. I thought he was going to be gone 10 days.
And then there's another component that he's heading out to. Could you not have the answer for you on that?
Can I do this? How about we do ahead and we'll hold off on that March 6 meeting, and we will give our town administrator another task, which is to get a whole text, Mr. Clark, and also Helen, see what dates might be working for them. But while we have everybody here, does everybody here, would anybody have a problem with the 8th?
No.
Would anybody have a problem with the 13th?
Yes.
8th is a Thursday.
8th is a Thursday.
Yeah. I am unavailable on the 13th for.
How about the 12th?
12th is fine.
School committee meets that night, but I don't, I'm not that worried about that.
Yeah, they're going to make their vote.
Right, but they may have to, so why don't we shoot for the 12th? Or do we really want to wait for the school committee to get done with their vote and therefore make it the 14th?
It's kind of the delay anyways, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess.
I mean, we've already approved the budget contingent upon them approving it, so unless they really throw us a curveball and don't go with that number.
Right.
We don't really, you know, how they vote.
No, budget-wise, we're all set. There's no problem with that. Yeah, let's do the 12th, let's do the 12th.
Okay. Take, I'll take, entertain a motion to have our next meeting changed to the 12th?
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, hearing, none. Favor, say, for the 12th, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be made March 12, and during the main topic of conversation on the agenda will be discussion of articles for town meeting.
And while we're here, why don't we have the 20th? So we'll do the 12th, and then March 20th.
Okay, is that to finish up the articles?
If, in case there, something doesn't.
So in other words, that's an if needed, we'll schedule it, and if for some reason we don't, then hallelujah.
Yep, and then we, then our next meeting will be 4/3, and then after 4/3, then we go into town meeting.
All right.
Unless there's something else that needs up.
Probably at the 4/3 meeting, I'm going to want to be able to present you our findings, our ratings of you to the public.
Okay.
So somewhere before that, I think we, do we need to have an executive session to discuss that, where each person had to sit down with you?
No, you do the executive session after the public release.
I thought we have, no, we did the executive session before the public release.
I talked to town council about that. Let me go back and refresh it, because a few years ago, they changed the open meeting law on that, so there's a different process.
Okay.
And I'll get back to you.
Another thing for the town administrator to do.
So we'll do the review on the 3rd.
Okay. I do not believe, unless you're going to throw me a curveball, we need to go into executive session tonight, because there was nothing listed in particular, just our general verbiage.
No, and that keeps us on time.
Yes, it does. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second? Further discussion, hearing, none. Ours in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, it's passed.